19:00 PM, the Chair moves to adjourn the executive session at 6:13 PM. Do I have a second? [S01] [S02] Second. Board member Beckman seconds. It is moved and seconded that the board adjourn the executive session. All those in favor say aye. [S02] Aye. Aye. The motion carries 5-0. The board will now move to Agenda Item 5, Executive Session. The governing board may vote to convene an executive session pursuant to ARS Section 38, 43103-AI for the following: reducing and mitigating security risks to SUSD network and data; discussion or consideration of matters relating to school safety operations or school safety plans or programs. Does the Chair have a motion to move into executive session? Board member Hartwell's moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Vice President Sanowski seconds. It is moved and seconded that the board convene an executive session pursuant to Agenda Item 5 as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries 5-0, and the board will now convene an executive session. 16:00 PM, the Chair moves to adjourn the executive session at 6:13 PM. Do I have a second? [S02] Second. Board member Beckman seconds. It is moved and seconded that the board adjourn the executive session. All those in favor say aye. [S02] Aye. Aye. The motion carries 5-0, and the board will now convene an executive session. 17:00 PM, the Chair moves to adjourn the executive session at 6:13 PM. Do I have a second? [S02] Second. Vice President Sanowski seconds. It is moved and seconded that the board convene an executive session pursuant to Agenda Item 5 as presented. All those in favor say aye. Okay, oh, correct, okay. The Agenda Item 8Q is being pulled from the agenda. The Chair moves to approve the agenda as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Board Member Beckman seconds is moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries 5-0, and the agenda is approved as amended. As a reminder, tonight, we will be accepting public comments. If you wish to make a public comment, please fill out one of the blue or white cards at the front and present it to the Board Secretary, Ms. Wagner. The board will now move to Agenda Item 4, student and staff recognitions and celebrations. Dr. Menzel.
Good evening, President Greenberg, Vice President Sanowski, and Governing Board Members. It's wonderful to be able to gather again in our regular meeting home at Coronado High School this evening, and to be able to welcome the community members who join us, and we have a very nice crowd here this evening. Despite the tumult of the last year on our normal routines and practices, we continue to see both normal and new ways that our students are engaging themselves in learning, and our educators are dedicating themselves to the calling of teaching, and we have examples of both of those to celebrate this evening. I'd like to begin tonight's celebrations with inviting Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education, Dr. Melissa Saccos, to the podium to kick off this evening's celebrations.
Thank you, Dr. Menzel. Good evening, President Greenberg, Vice President Sanowski, Governing Board Members, and Ms. Wagner. What a surreal moment to be in front of this podium. This is awesome, and to, and all of our guests. It's great to see us all back in, in one house here. I'm happy to be able to kick off tonight's student celebrations, and we have some guests joining us this evening from Ingleside Middle School. I'd like to first invite up 8th grade student Aiden McClure, comprehensive gifted science teacher Deanne McDaniel, and Principal Ara Kadera to join me at the podium. I'd love to see you, Aiden. All right. Aiden found an interesting way to pass Thanksgiving break back in November. At the encouragement of his mother, wait to Mrs. McClure. There she is. Aiden wrote an essay for the Artemis Moon Pod Essay Contest. The competition offered by an organization you may have not heard of called Future Engineers, and an organization you have definitely heard of, NASA, the National Aeronautics and Space Administration, asked K-12 students to imagine leading a one-week expedition at our moon's south pole, and Aiden did just that. NASA's Artemis program aims to land the first woman and the next man on the moon by 2024. Students were asked to write about the skills, attributes, and personality traits that a moon pod crew would need to have to be, to be successful, and describe how they would be and how they would be used. Using innovative technologies to explore more of the moon's surface than previous Apollo missions, the Artemis program will use what is learned on the moon to take its next major outer space project, sending astronauts to Mars. Aiden's essay, which you will see on the screen, covered the work by the crew that is assigned to establish a lunar base. Last month, Aiden's essay was named one of 155 semifinalist entries out of 14,000 that were submitted nationwide. And I have a feeling, Aiden, you want to tell us a little bit about this. All right.
So, last fall, my mom suggested I participate in the essay contest about the moon pod. I thought it was interesting, so I wrote an essay. I used what I've learned in three years of science class with Mrs. McDaniel to write my essay. A big part of her class is developing and utilizing critical thinking skills, and I use these when deciding about what to write. I also included information from books like The Martian by Andy Weir, The Elements by Theodore Gray, and Space by James Menschner. The idea for the landing pad I wrote about actually came from Star Wars, because waystations show up a lot in those stories. I am excited to be Arizona's middle school representative in a series of virtual sessions about the Artemis missions with NASA experts. Thank you.
Although Aiden's essay was not chosen as a finalist, and he received some of the coolest prizes, and of course, the coolest of all is tonight's SUSD challenge coin. Even I have to admit that the coolest of all of them is that a digital copy of his essay will be, will fly around the moon on the first Artemis mission. Wow.
Thank you, Dr. Saccos, and congratulations, Aiden. To borrow from a well-known film. To borrow from a well-known film, congratulations on your pursuit of not only the moon, but to infinity and beyond. You'll also remember in December that we celebrated the recertification of five of our National Board Certified Teachers. At that time, we mentioned there may be some more to celebrate, and tonight is the night. I'd like to ask Dr. Kim Garen, Assistant Superintendent for Educational Services, to the podium. Dr. Garen.
Thank you, Dr. Menzel, Governing Board Members. Well, it seems so appropriate to celebrate teachers in their pursuit of effective teaching when we just hear such an inspirational story from a student. We are pleased to introduce to you Scottsdale Unified School District's newest National Board Certified Teachers, Mrs. Clarin Guske from Chaparral High School, and Mrs. Anne Waddington from Cherokee Elementary School. Let's give them a round of applause. Would you both join me at the podium with your principals as well, please? I would also like to invite our lead NBCT trainer to the podium, Ingleside Middle School Physical Education Teacher Susan Leonard, and Laguna Elementary 4th Grade Teacher Abby Bobbitt, who volunteers on the teacher training team. It is through the leadership of these two teachers that we continue the amazing growth of the National Board Certified Program. As you know, this voluntary, rigorous certification is the most respected professional development in the nation for teachers. It's an undertaking that can take up to five years in typical times. These teachers did it with a pandemic going on, which is really incredible. So, congratulations. It must be balanced with school and after-school responsibilities, collaboration time, family commitments, and they made it happen. It's due to the dedication of teaching professionals like Mrs. Guske and Mrs. Waddington, and their willingness to put their teaching practices under the microscope that enables SUSD to deliver the tremendous learning opportunity to our 22,000 students. I've asked their principals if they'd like to tell us a little bit more about these amazing educators, so let's start with Mr. Dryford.
Mrs. Guske received the Charles Foundation Future Teacher Scholarship in 2008 when she was graduating Chaparral Senior. Even though it took her three years to pass Algebra II, we knew at that time she would be an extremely outstanding math teacher. She graduated with honors from Northern Arizona University in 2012 with a bachelor's degree in secondary education, with an emphasis in mathematics and a minor in psychology. She began her math teaching career with SUSD in 2012 at Arcadia High School, taught math in both Connecticut and Oregon, and in 2015 was awarded the Crystal Apple Award. Her current duties revolve around relating the fine points of polynomials, complex numbers, rational exponents, and exponential and logarithmic functions to Firebirds and Algebra II and III students. We are extremely fortunate to have Clarin on our staff, and I sincerely thank her for her dedication to our students at Chaparral High School.
Good evening, Mr. President, Madam, Mr. President, Members of the Governing Board, Dr. Menzel, Mrs. Wagner, colleagues, visitors, and anybody else who showed up tonight. This is surreal to be up here in front of actual people, so here we go. This is Anne Waddington, and it's my pleasure to introduce her to you as Cherokee's newest National Board Certified Teacher. Anne is an incredible 1st grade teacher and a lifelong learner. She started at Washington State University with a bachelor's in criminal justice, and then went on to get her first master's in teaching at the same university. She later received her second master's degree from St. Joseph University as a reading specialist. This amazing teacher has taught kindergarten, 1st grade, 2nd grade, and even tried middle school. She was a former teacher in East Harlem, then off to Seattle, then arrived in Arizona finally, where Deer Valley picked her up, and if you ask her, she went to Deer Valley because Scottsdale didn't have a job for her at that time. But thankfully, we were able to grab her, and she went to Pima. Then later, she followed her children over to Cherokee Elementary School, where she is now with me. She joined our team in 2018. Anne is the real deal. She's extremely accomplished and has worked as a teacher, a coach, a reading specialist, an ELL specialist, and is one course away from her gifted provisional endorsement. She's also a trainer of trainers for Thinking Maps, Lucy Culkin's Writing Program, and the Level Literacy Intervention. And now, the crown jewel, she's a National Board Certified Teacher. Anne Waddington, everyone. We're so proud of her.
So, on behalf of SUSD, we want to thank you for your service, provide you with a plaque, and of course, the challenge coin. Thank you so much for helping us elevate the science and art of teaching in SUSD.
Congratulations, Mrs. Waddington and Mrs. Guske, for your dedication to your craft and to your students. We're so proud of all of our National Board Certified Teachers. SUSD is among the leaders in the state, and we are truly honored tonight to be able to celebrate this recognition with, with them. We also, speaking of National Board Certified Teachers, you might recognize our next guest, who hails from the far northeastern reaches of Scottsdale Unified School District. I'd like to invite Dr. Hagigot to the podium to reintroduce him to us this evening. Dr. Hagigot.
Thank you, Dr. Menzel. Good evening, President Greenberg, Vice President Sanowski, Governing Board Members. I am so proud to be standing here before you today to once again recognize another truly outstanding Unified School District educator, Mr. Kyle Bragg of Anasazi Elementary. Mr. Bragg, would you please join me? And Ms. Waldron, will you please join me as well? We've known for some time that Mr. Bragg is someone very, very special. He makes sure that physical, his physical education students are engaged and supported. He makes PE fun and meaningful. He goes above and beyond for his students, for his colleagues, for Anasazi, and for our district. Mr. Bragg has been here before with us, when he became the NBCT teacher a few years ago, and then he was named Arizona Elementary PE Teacher of the Year. Well, now, he's even one-upped himself. Having received national recognition last week from the most respected organization for health and physical education teachers, Shape America, let me introduce you to Mr. Kyle Bragg, 2021's National Elementary PE Teacher of the Year. I've had the opportunity to really come and observe some of his work when I visit Anasazi, and he is the real deal. He is humble, he is kind, he is knowledgeable, but I'll stop at that because I want to have Ms. Waldron step to the podium and share a little bit more with us.
I feel like Dr. Hagigot did a great job, but Dr. Menzel, President Greenberg, Vice President Sanowski, Governing Board Members, and Gladys, it is such an honor to be here tonight to brag about Mr. Bragg some more, in addition to everything Dr. Hagigot shared, not only the National Board recognition, but he was Arizona PE Teacher of the Year, he was Innovative Teacher of the Year, he was the Division PE Teacher of the Year, and now the National Elementary PE Teacher of the Year. I have to tell you, it is an honor and a privilege to work with educators who are doing what's best for kids every single day. But outside of the classroom, I think it's important for everyone to know what an advocate Kyle is for physical education and public education in general. He presents all over the country, and after work hours, you can find that he has a very active Twitter. I won't share his handle because he has not given me permission, but he spends hours outside of the workday collaborating with peers worldwide in regards to best practices with teaching and physical education. And it's just an honor to work with someone like Kyle, and he's so young, he has so much more to go, and if Shape America has a PE Teacher of the World, we might be here next year, no doubt. I don't know if they do, but we might have to create that. But we're just so excited for Mr. Bragg. It is truly an honor to work with him and to have him here in Scottsdale Unified School
To receive this recognition from adults is wonderful, but what can we do to take it one more level? We'd like to invite Gabriella Livney, and she has, she's a 5th grader at Anasazi, and she has a couple of words that she wants to share. Gabriella, will you join us?
Good evening, Dr. Menzel, President Greenberg, Vice President Sanowski, Governing Board Members, and Gladys. My name is Gabriella, a 5th grader at Anasazi Elementary. I was asked why I think Mr. Bragg should win this award, and the answer is not that simple. I wrote my response in a five-page, five-page essay, but to save time, here's my shortened version so we're not here by midnight. Mr. Bragg isn't just a simple PE teacher who plays a video the whole class. He's invested in his students. He's just, he's a great part of me and my classmates' day that we all look forward to. I've had Mr. Bragg since I was in kindergarten, and in every class, he teaches us something new, something fun, and something related to our fitness, health, and everyday skills. For example, last year, we did the Pacer jogging test. He taught us about breathing techniques, and because of this, I can run long distance, which helps, sorry, helps me tremendously in club soccer. He's at every event at our school and supports our school and his students. At the carnival, he even, to raise money, he even took a pie to the face. I'm a member of Student Council, and Mr. Bragg was always willing to give advice and help, which shows us that he helps beyond PE class. It seems that everyone is comfortable in PE with Mr. Bragg, no matter how good they are at sports or skills. He really connects with us and makes us feel important. I always leave PE with such a positive mindset. He teaches us to accept people for who they are. Making a positive impact on our community rather than always thinking about ourselves is what he teaches us to do daily. I appreciate Mr. Bragg so much and everything he does for us in PE. He is one of my favorite teachers, and if I hopefully go to the Olympics someday, he will definitely have a family ticket from me. Great job, Mr. Bragg. I knew you would win.
Gabriella, thank you. And at this time, I'd like to turn the podium over to Mr. Bragg.
First of all, thank you. What a, how courageous does she have to be to get up here in front of everybody? That was, one more hand for Gabrielle. That was awesome. I remember for National Board Certification, I thought we were taping, she was in 2nd grade, and thought it didn't record, and so I started tearing up a little bit in front, and she stood up, and she's like, "We got you, we'll do it again, like, we got you." And like, this meant a lot to me. We ended up finding the video, thankfully, but that was her willingness to do her part to help out. It's, I always joke about, it's easy to look really good if they listen to everything you say. And I have a great, great student body at Anasazi, great leadership. I know I couldn't be able to do this without the freedom to do it my way, and Ms. Waldron does that, and I'm really happy to be at Anasazi. I also want to say, when Dr. Hagigot was there the other day, she gave me an elbow bump and, and said, "I got good feelings about this," and I said, "That's, that makes one of us." And I know how good the other guys, the other teachers are, and I was up against, but I'm just really excited and really proud of what our students are accomplishing, as she said, beyond just the physical skills, but the problem-solving, cooperation, teamwork, and the social-emotional learning going on that's going to be transferred to other settings. So, thank you. So, thank you for this time, and I'm so happy that you let my student join us. Thank you so much.
Now, we'd like to recognize Mr. Bragg and Gabriella with the challenge coin. Again, congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Bragg, and thank you for choosing to share your talents here with us at SUSD. And thank you, Gabriella, for sharing your student perspective about Mr. Bragg. There's just nothing like hearing from our students, and we'll have more of that this evening. There are a few more other things to celebrate, so we're not done. We have some sensational news to share with you out of a project that started some time ago and from which we saw the first results about a year ago. The school safety program funded by the Arizona Legislature provides school safety and mental health professionals to Arizona schools. In December of 2019, the program was expanded to include school counselors and social workers for the first time. Despite these gains, demand outstripped program funds, leaving many schools who applied for a position unfunded. Yesterday, the Arizona Department of Education announced the allocation of $21.3 million in federal COVID relief funds, known as the ESER funds, to support the school safety grant program. This funding will support the hiring of an additional 71 school counselors and 69 school social workers for two years across the state of Arizona. Twenty-two of those social workers will work here at Scottsdale Unified School District. During the initial awards from the original ADE grant program last spring, SUSD was provided with funding for two school social workers, who, as you may recall, were placed at Tonalea K-8 and here at Coronado High School. And earlier this year, funding for an additional four social workers was awarded at Echo Canyon, Ingleside, Arcadia, and Suaro High School. The ADE announcement yesterday is in the most recent round of funding will add 22 more social workers to the balance of SUSD schools, meaning that every school in our district will have a full-time, grant-funded social worker for the two-year grant cycle. Our Support Services Office will provide leadership and strategic direction to ensure grant goals and objectives are aligned with SUSD's multi-tiered systems support framework, and our social workers will oversee the daily operations within that framework, which is basically the gold standard for social-emotional learning practices and interventions, and is designed to create a safe, supportive, and equitable learning environment for all of our SUSD students. Our deepest appreciation goes to Dr. Sakos and Shannon Cron, our Director of Support Services, to Dr. Garin, Cheryl Redner, our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, and Lindsay Stoller-Slover, our Grant Writer, for the long, arduous work that went into gathering the information to write and submit 28 grant proposals on behalf of each of our schools. It is because of their leadership and passion for supporting our students that this great achievement has been accomplished and from which our students will benefit greatly. So, thank you to all of you for your assistance in writing those grants. But wait, there's more. So, you might remember some time ago, actually last month, we met Tristan Davenport from Desert Mountain High School, and she's competing in the National English Speaking Union's annual Shakespeare Competition People's Choice Award. We promised at that time that we would give you information on how to vote for Tristan. So, rather than just send an email to the governing board, I want to share it with all of the people in the audience as well, so our SUSD family can help support Tristan in this effort. So, you can text NCS27 to 212-818-1200. Again, text NCS27 to 212-818-1200. And don't worry about the long-distance call. Tristan tells us it's free. The voting ends this Friday, so get your vote in as soon as you can, and good luck to Tristan from all of us at SUSD. Just a couple of final celebrations this evening. I hope that tomorrow, we can all make time to celebrate the fact that it's National Administrative Professionals Day. First, I want to thank Gladys, who is my new administrative assistant. And I was pretty sure that National Administrative Professionals Day was a week from tomorrow, so I'm glad that I got the reminder this evening. But no, we are so grateful for all that our administrative assistants, school secretaries, and executives, assistants, and administrative support professionals who keep our schools and district offices operating on time and on task. We depend on them every day, and while we may not tell them thank you enough, tonight we want to spend time expressing our appreciation and encourage all of you to do the same. And next Tuesday, April 27th, is School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. So, when you're dropping off, so when you're dropping off or picking up your student at the bus stop or any day, please give a shout-out to your bus driver and thank him or her for getting our children to and from school safely every day and transporting our middle school and high school athletic teams to games, meets, and matches. It's not an easy job, and we are grateful for all the work that you do. And to give you some perspective as to their work, so far this year, SUSD's 89 bus drivers have provided 367,525 rides, over 509,290 miles, on 53 general education routes and 28 special needs routes. They're supported by 20 transportation assistants, 11 mechanics, 10 operations staff. So, in fact, April 27th should be a celebration of them all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Menzel, and congratulations to all the award recipients. Fantastic work. And again, to all the administrators and our bus drivers, again, without you, we would not be the district that we are. So, thank you. The board will now move to Agenda Item 5, Superintendent's Comments. Dr. Menzel?
We do have a long agenda this evening, President Greenberg, Vice President Sanowski, and members of the governing board, but there is one item that I would like to speak to before we turn to the rest of our agenda. So, as many people know, yesterday, the governor issued a new statement with respect to the wearing of masks at our schools, and Dr. Kara Chris also issued a statement from the Arizona Department of Health Services, and Scottsdale Unified School District issued a statement at the end of the day. So, I wanted just to make clear some of the issues and considerations that we've taken as we think about next steps. As we communicated in the email that we sent to our staff, we are now, it was 28 days yesterday, 27 school days from the end of this school year. As all of you know, it's been a particularly challenging year from the very beginning as we've navigated the COVID crisis. We've been able to keep our schools open for in-person learning since we started in September 12th, and we are hoping to finish the year strong. And while we know that there is a desire on the part of many to not have to wear masks, what I was concerned about, what the team was concerned about as we looked at this and in conversations with Dr. Sun and Shine and others, is that if we move too quickly, we might jeopardize the ability to finish the year strong. And I, in particular, have been thinking about graduation, graduation ceremonies for the class of 2021 in person, something that the class of 2020 didn't get, unfortunately, as a result of COVID, and I didn't want to have a repeat of that. There are many other things that are so important for our students as we end this school year. And as much as I personally would like to not be wearing the mask, I believe that in order to finish this year as strong as we can, it's something that we need to do. At the same time, I'm really hopeful that when we get to the start of next school year, we won't have a mask requirement because I think that we should be at a better place. That's my hope. That's our desire. And so, balancing all of those interests are the reason why that we made that recommendation. And I'm hopeful that our community will come together. We know that navigating this entire situation has called on all of us to act in ways that are above and beyond what we would normally like to do. But for the benefit of our community, our students, and their future, we're asking that we can get through this together, finish the school year strong, and look forward to a more hopeful and optimistic start to the 2021-22 school year.
Thank you. The board will now move to Public Comments, Agenda Item 6. As a reminder, each speaker will be allotted three minutes to speak. The timer will be on the board for you to watch and on the computer monitor. Our first speaker tonight is the Reverend Martha Seaman.
Chairman, President, excuse me, Sanowski, and members of the board, Dr. Menzel. I am the Reverend Martha Seaman, Deacon of the Episcopal Diocese of Arizona, and President of the Board of Valley Interfaith Project. We have been active supporters of public education for many years and work to pass overrides and bonds for SUSD. Along with our sister organizations who form the Arizona Interfaith Network, we are part of the coalition that brought forth Prop 208, in large part because we saw the need to be in solidarity with our teachers. I am a 34-year resident of this neighborhood, and both of my sons graduated from Coronado. I myself, with hundreds of other VIP leaders over the past 20 years, have walked SUSD precincts often, and often side by side with SEA members. The teachers were doing it in their off-hour works, hours, on evenings and weekends before they had to go and develop lesson plans and grade papers. There is no questioning their dedication to our children and to this district. It is long past time that the district recognized this. So, we are here tonight to urge you to support recognizing the Scottsdale Education Association. SEA is a member of Valley Interfaith Project, and they have worked with the congregations, neighborhood associations, nonprofits, that make up VIP to assure that our families and our communities are heard in decision-making processes that affect them. Recognizing SEA is the right thing to do for the young people in our community and their families. Our educators are dedicated professionals, and their full participation is vital, both to meeting the challenges that lie ahead and to creating the opportunities for our children to flourish. Recognition is foundational for building relationship based on mutual respect. VIP encourages you to take that step this evening.
Our next speaker is David Hanlon, and if needed, please feel free to adjust the microphone and cover on it.
Good evening, Dr. Menzel, President Greenberg, Vice President Sanowski, Governing Board, and Ms. Wagner. I'm Dave Hanlon, Vice President of SEA, and I'm reading comments this evening by Becky Williams, our SEA President, who is attending her son's orchestra concert at Suaro right now, so the following is her statement. "I am privileged to serve the SUSD community in my roles as classroom teacher and the president of the Scottsdale Education Association. I have been a member of and aspire to leadership in my local association since the beginning of my teaching career because I believe that every student deserves to have a qualified, certified education professional in their classroom and in the positions that support classroom instruction. I want this for my own children, my students, and students across Arizona. Our purpose is to advocate for the teaching profession and in doing so, assure excellent learning conditions for all of our students. The professional supports that we advocate for include working conditions, appropriate compensation, meaningful professional development, and supportive mentoring for educators new to the profession," to name a few. "When professionals have optimal working conditions, our students have optimal learning environments. Through this year of pandemic teaching, all of our district employees have been stretched to unimaginable capacities to meet the learning, physical, and social-emotional needs of our students. We are dedicated to our students first and foremost and are here to continue this work into the future. A formalized partnership in Scottsdale between our three employee representative associations and the district ensures that we will collaborate in moving forward, providing the best possible learning conditions for our students by prioritizing conditions that attract and retain highly-qualified educational professionals. We look forward to your vote this evening to approve Policy HA and the partnership that this policy signifies. We are ready to move forward in the spirit of partnership and collaboration, knowing that we are better together. On behalf of the Scottsdale Education Association and the over 1,400 certified district employees that we represent, thank you."
Before we move on to our next speaker, I must apologize. I've been chastised by the IT team. Do not touch the microphone if you are speaking tonight. And I appreciate the IT team for that. Jeez, I almost said board member. Our next speaker is Allison Beckham.
I was told it was going to be in front of the other area, so is this okay?
This is the blue card.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is not an agenda item portion.
It's an action item, just like the last one, Policy HA, but I was told because it was an action item, it would be later, but I'm more than happy to speak now.
There are two cards.
I did fill out both cards.
Okay, do you want to speak twice?
No.
Oh, I apologize for that. Then I will call another speaker then and call you.
Okay, but since Policy HA was just mentioned, I mean, Becky Williams spoke, so maybe it's okay to speak at this time.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right. That sounds good. My name is Allison Beckham, and I finished my four-year term as board member and president of the board this past year. As a former board member, I understand the development of policy process, and I was instrumental in changing the policy process to include a policy committee that I understand was not followed on the proposed Policy HA. Last Thursday, I sent an email to the governing board members and Dr. Menzel with 11 questions that were not answered in the proposed policy. I received a reply from Dr. Menzel yesterday with approximately five of the 11 questions unanswered because the answers hadn't been determined yet. As you can imagine, I was surprised the Policy HA was still on the agenda for approval tonight. I would hope if the governing board members and the superintendent cannot definitively answer questions to this proposed policy, that it would be tabled until the answers are answered or written into the policy to reduce confusion and mitigate misinterpretation. So, please consider approving, to not approving this policy tonight, but maybe to table it to have it rewritten. One of the items that I found a little disconcerting is I was unable to pull up the policy. It was not on the website for the agenda, and it is not in tonight's policy agenda. So, I don't know if it actually received the 24-hour notice or if the actual policy needed to be. So, I am going, based upon the past policy, I don't know if there have been any changes that you're going to be presenting tonight. I only have three minutes. Now, I have 1 minute and 25 seconds, so I'm not going to read all my questions. I'm just going to bring up a couple of points. The proposed policy language suggests to the district that it will enter into an employment agreement with professional organizations. First, the policy needs to be changed to say that the district will negotiate in good faith to enter into an employment agreement, because on the proposal today, it says the proposed policy contemplates the creation of the employment agreement at the conclusion of the meet-and-confer process, and I don't believe that that is how it is stated in the actual policy. So, I'd like to have that reviewed or talked about tonight. And there is a settled difference there, but if it is said to be negotiated in good faith, and if the parties, if any of the parties are unreasonable, then they are not forced to make concessions that would not be positive for the students or the teachers or the employees. So, I would like to make sure that the policy does reflect that. Secondly, with regards to the professional associations, I know that on my time on the board, and I'll just go to the largest association, the SEA, when I was a board member, we believed the SEA's membership included only about 30% of the teachers, which means that the SEA doesn't include 70% of those teachers, and they don't represent them then. So, the association needs to be transparent regarding its membership numbers so the district knows who to negotiate with and whether those parties represent a minority of the teachers or a majority. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Carrie Blaker, followed by Amanda Ray.
Good evening, Governing Board President Greenberg, Vice President Sanowski, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. members, Superintendent Dr. Menzel, and Executive Administrative Coordinator Gladys Wagner. Choosing to work in education at any level is a calling. Allow me to reflect on a little history to honor our fellow classified workers. In the past, relationships between the classified staff and other employee groups were more segregated. At times, the classified work lacked being recognized or celebrated, and job descriptions have been unrevised, duties increased, and pay seemed to be more of an afterthought, only benefiting from state minimum wage increases. Not all, but many classified staff members have been working in frustration or fear as their level of services seemed devalued, underappreciated, or even at times without notice, positions eliminated. Please know most of the classified staff have embraced their position as a career choice, despite the lack of financial support because they too do love what they do. Fast forwarding to the present, the SSPA has been working hard since the pandemic, and we have every intention of keeping up with the momentum. We are doing what we do best, which is doing whatever it takes to keep the students and staff feeling safe and supported so that all others can do what they do best successfully. I would like to encourage other classified education support professionals from all other job families serving the Scottsdale Unified School District to come forward in future meetings to introduce themselves and share the great work they do. We are not an association made up of teachers or administrators. We are everyone else, and we are everywhere. The Scottsdale Support Professionals Association this year is very proud of the work we are doing with all classified job families, the other associations SEA and SAA, including the SUSD. We are humbled and honored to be working together and now surrounded with what we feel is better leadership that knows how to build a far better community. Sorry. Our reasons for the request for recognition are as follows. We are making great strides with building stronger relationships, trust, and confidence with all ESPs, and listening to their needs. We're helping ESPs by providing them a safe space to discuss their concerns and listening for how we can support their growth for retention and longevity for all. We assist with positive advocacy and solution-based suggestions for a professional climate and a successful operation of equity for our future with SUSD. We are reminding everyone that we are full partners in education for students. Please recognize our work and the need to reinstate all employee agreements for collective bargaining, a historical process to ensure that we have a voice in developing an appropriate salary, benefits, and working conditions.
Our next speaker is Amanda Rae, followed by Rose Smith.
Good evening. Please forgive me as I speed read this to beat the buzzer. The Arizona, I'm going to read an excerpt from the Arizona Department of Education Parental Rights Handbook. "All parental rights are reserved to a parent of a minor child without obstruction or interference from the state, any political subdivision of the state, any other governmental entity, or any other institution, including the right to direct the education of the minor child and the right to direct the moral or religious training of the minor child. As it relates to parental involvement in the school, the handbook states, 'The Governing Board, in consultation with parents, teachers, and administrators, shall develop and adopt a policy to promote the involvement of parents and guardians of children enrolled in the schools within the school district, including procedures by which parents may learn about the course of study for their children and review learning materials, including the source of any supplemental educational materials.' Tonight, you are scheduled to vote on curriculum that was reviewed without parental involvement and violates the Arizona Parental Rights Handbook. What is the process for which parents are supposed to be invited to these curriculum committees? My fellow parents and I have no recollection for any invitation to participate in a curriculum committee. Having zero or only one parent on a committee is unacceptable. There should be a requirement to include a minimum number of parents in order to move forward with a committee. A committee should include representation of the largest stakeholder, the families and students. This is yet another example of the district assuming that they know what is best for students and making decisions in a vacuum. The links provided on the SUSD website are that of only marketing materials, and a few quick Google searches suggest that it's likely intentional. If this curriculum addition is in the best interest of our students, then why is it done covertly? My second and fourth grader used Brain Pop. I was recently alerted to the existence of several Brain Pop videos that presented a very one-sided and inaccurate explanations of culture and political events happening today that were obviously added after SUSD purchased this curriculum several years ago. The committee and board have touted these curriculum providers as ideal because they are continuously updated with current events and material. What is the process to review the additional material that is added to an online library from a curriculum provider? I'd like to remind you that the Parental Rights Handbook prohibits the school district from interfering with my right as a parent to direct the moral training of my child. And before you dismiss me for being dramatic, we have reason to be concerned in reviewing current curriculum. A Peoria parent was able to link directly to pornographic websites from an approved library of their own, provided curriculum by Gale Curriculum. The vote to adopt this curriculum tonight should be tabled until the material has been available for parent review.
Our next speaker will be Rose Smith, followed by Krista Dimitrulias. I apologize for that.
Hi, my name is Rose Smith. I'm a proud community member, and I'm on the Strategic Plan Design Team. In our meetings, my colleagues underscore the importance of inclusion, communication, and respect as values we aspire to in SUSD. A necessary step towards those goals is hearing the voices of those who have been constant in the lives of our students they serve, the school administration, teachers, and classified employees. For over 50 years, SUSD principals, teachers, and classified have exchanged views and concerns in an ongoing roundtable called Meet and Confer. Areas of concern might range from position reclassification to views on classroom cap sizes. The employee leadership team then communicates the information to their stakeholder groups, demonstrating an ongoing dialogue between the district and its employees. A few years ago, a decision was made to silence the voices of our employee associations. The time is now for SUSD to practice what we aspire to, inclusion, communication, and respect. If we want to attract and retain the most talented site leaders, teachers, and support staff to guide our students, we must demonstrate that we value their opinions. If we want to inspire students toward critical thinking, we must model how collaboration and communication help guide decision-making. If we want to establish mutual respect, we start with acknowledgement that those who serve our students are entitled to have a voice in their educational environment. I'd like to urge this Governing Board to recognize our SUSD employee associations and express my appreciation to the thousands of employees represented by the SAA, SEA, and SSPA, because together we are better.
Our next speaker will be Krista Dimitrulias, followed by Trish Olson. I apologize if I mispronounced your last name.
Nope, you got it. Good evening, Governing Board President Greenberg, Vice President Sanowski, members of the Governing Board, Dr. Menzel, and Ms. Gladys Wagner. My name is Krista Dimitrulias, and I am the proud administrative support coordinator for Coronado High School and the Vice President of the Scottsdale Support Professional Association. I stand here tonight to express my deepest gratitude to you for agreeing to hear the voice of all classified staff. By approving the HA agreement, we are opening the door to have meaningful conversations to help create a collaborative and supportive working environment for the nine job families that represent the education support professionals. Individually, we are administrative assistants, bus drivers, paraeducators, health assistants, facilities and maintenance workers, carpenters, painters, plumbers, HVAC, and electricians, nutrition services, and security. Collectively, we make up half of the SUSD workforce. We are oftentimes the first people on campus, the first to see students, and we are the last to leave at night. We get the students to school safely, and while they are here, we make sure they stay safe. This agreement will help to establish the guidelines whereby classified employees will have a voice in decisions that directly impact their jobs. One of our main goals is to work with the district to create meaningful and relevant professional development and mentorship opportunities. It is our hope that this will increase retention, improve job satisfaction, and help continue our culture of professional excellence.
Our next speaker will be Trish Olson, followed by Nick Noonan.
Hello, Dr. Menzel, President Greenberg, Vice President Sanowski, SUSD Governing Board, and Ms. Wagner. I think I got it, okay. My name's Trish Olson. I'm the proud parent of three SUSD students. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. As we move forward, and hopefully away from everything centering around COVID, one of the concerns I have for our district is the declining enrollment. I'm a K through 12 alumnus of this district. My husband and I chose SUSD for our own three children, knowing what a special place it is. Over the last couple of years, and especially during this last school year, we've come to know more and more families that are choosing to move their children out of SUSD. There are many reasons people choose to send their children to other schools, and while there are a portion of them that were planning on leaving anyway, for their own reasons, it's the really involved, supportive families with amazing, creative, smart students that never had any intention of pulling their kids out of this district that really concern me. I've asked many of them the reasons for leaving, and while there are a variety of reasons, many of them just boil down to transparency. Parents of SUSD want transparency in all school-related topics that affect their children. I know that there were some issues at the district level a few years ago that none of you had any part in. I know that none of you could have planned for COVID and/or the steps that would be needed to get the doors open in our schools. I know that you don't have a crystal ball, and you can't tell us what August will look like, but even with all of that being said, the need for transparency for our parents and our caregivers has not changed. SUSD curriculum must become transparent to parents. Everyone knows that there are certain topics in relation to curriculum that are somewhat controversial. It's being discussed all over the country, on the news, on social media, on playgrounds, and on soccer fields. When I do the research for myself, I have a really hard time drilling down on the SUSD website to find out exactly what's being taught in my children's classrooms. The lack of resources available to parents creates a lot of misinformation and speculation. If parents have easy access to this information or could be more involved in the process of selecting new curriculum, I believe a lot of this misinformation and speculation could be avoided, and we could all get back to focusing on the number-one priority here, students. Conversations about controversial topics should not be swept under the rug. If those conversations need to be had, let's have them, but it's important that parents have a clear and concise understanding of how these subjects will be taught and presented to our children. I also fear the impact of a mask mandate on the enrollment numbers for SUSD, but Dr. Menzel covered that, so I'm going to skip that part. Please keep the lines of communication open with parents. There are families that would be making very important decisions about where their children will be going next school year, and I hope that they can all choose SUSD because they know exactly what to expect when their kids walk through those doors next year. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Nick Noonan, followed by Karen Treen.
Good evening, Board President Greenberg, Vice President Sanowski, Board members, Dr. Menzel, and Ms. Wagner. My name is Nick Noonan, and I am the principal of Cogapaw Middle School. I'm also the president of the Scottsdale Administrators Association, also known as SAA. Not many within Scottsdale Unified School District know that the original name of the organization, which was established in 1974, was the Scottsdale Affiliation of Administrators. We have recently retired that name and rebranded and reformalized the organization by registering with the Arizona Corporation Commission and the IRS as a 501(c)(4). SAA has been the professional organization of site and district-level leaders for Scottsdale Unified School District. Our membership has included principals, assistant principals, school psychologists, and department leaders at the MDA and warehouse. In reestablishing SAA, membership will begin with school leaders, principals, and assistant principals. Our representatives engage in discussions with the SEA, SSPA, and district leadership to ensure we have a shared understanding of district goals and work conditions for our employees. SAA has a social side, too. For many years, it was SAA who organized and coordinated the efforts to mount principals on horseback and ride in the Prada del Sol. Yes, I said mount horses, although I will never do that. I will never be on a horse. Since this event highlighted the district and not individual leaders, Dr. Peterson's administration worked with SAA to increase participation and wagon riders to include teachers and students. SUSD participation today reflects SAA's goal to work collaboratively. We also host socials, which allow our members to network, both with their peers and often with district and cabinet-level leaders who are our invited guests. Again, a reflection of SAA's desire to work collaboratively with the superintendent's office. Despite 2016 being the last working agreement to be signed and recognized by SUSD, SAA has continued to meet informally with the superintendent's office. Dr. Kriekard was once a member himself of the organization, calendar to time, to meet with our group. We are grateful that Dr. Menzel has continued the practice of meeting to discuss current working conditions and systems and processes and other items that would be covered in the working agreement that led to the smooth operation of our district. Scottsdale Association of Administrators thanks this board for their consideration to return to a practice of formally recognizing each of the employee associations by adopting Board Policy HA. We believe that Scottsdale Unified School District will be a stronger district when it returns to working collaboratively with each group. Establishing and maintaining a working agreement with the employee associations will lead to increased understanding of expectations, working conditions, and due process, which ultimately leads to increased cooperation and the smooth operation of the district. Our goal is to create a working agreement that is a living document and updated annually to establish mutual understanding between the employer and the employee. Thank you for having the courage and the commitment to recognize the employee groups as a partner in this district.
Our next speaker is Karen Treen, followed by our final speaker, Katie Woodward.
Good evening, President Greenberg, Vice President Sanowski, members of the board, Dr. Menzel, and Ms. Wagner. My name is Karen Treen. I'm a parent and resident of the Arcadia complex. In the history books that our great-grandchildren will read 50 years from now, the summer of 2021 will mark the end of a chapter. The next chapter will be the post-pandemic chapter, and what you and other school leaders do now will form the opening paragraphs of that chapter. Next year will be a year of recovery, of resetting, of reprioritizing, and refocusing. You have an opportunity to restore the things that worked before COVID and remedy the things that didn't work before COVID, and that is in addition to and on top of addressing the immediate impact of this pandemic year on learning and our students' lives. A strong post-pandemic year will require vision, insight, expertise, flexibility, and willingness to adapt, but most of all, it will require the on-the-ground perspective and professional knowledge that only our teachers and staff can provide. SUSD's relationship with teachers, site leaders, and staff has been rocky in recent years. While some of the most difficult episodes are over and things might feel less unstable, the district has not yet taken decisive action to invite staff to the table, to listen to their ideas, to collaborate in an organized and systemic way, to develop plans, to respond to identified needs, and to implement the ideas that will grow out of such a process, ideas that will certainly benefit our students in measurable and immeasurable ways. Now is the time. Next year is a unique opportunity, and it will not come our way again. I am here to ask you to recognize that your greatest strength is your staff. Hear their voices, involve them in creating solutions, and work as a team as you write the draft of that next chapter. I firmly believe it is the only way we will succeed. The time for clear and bold action on this is now, and it is urgent. Please don't delay this any further. The 2021 school year starts in 106 days, and SUSD will be better together.
Our final speaker is Katie Woodward.
Good evening, President Greenberg, Vice President
Good evening, President Greenberg, Vice President Sanowski, Board of Governors, and also Dr. Menzel and Ms. Wagner. Thank you for your service. We appreciate it. My name is Katie Woodward, and I am a member of St. Patrick Catholic Community in Scottsdale and also a leader at Valley Interfaith Project, and it is very encouraging this evening to know that you intend to vote on the recognition of the Scottsdale Education Association. Although it's been a while in coming, it is very valuable that we do recognize these teachers that are key stakeholders for the district, and they are also your partners. They are not your adversaries. Our member congregations in Valley Interfaith Project, which number about 40, we draw on our faith, and in our ministries that we carry out through that, it is our charge to take care of our families and our children that are in our parishes throughout our areas. But we are not only charged with taking care of their spirituality, we are charged with taking care of their social and their economic and their educational well-being at the same time. And to that end, we know that one of the best things that lift our students up, which is what this is all about, are the students, is to recognize those professionals that are charged with day-in and day-out care of those students, and those are our teachers. When educators have a clear voice in our policies and our practices that affect our students, the outcome of that is the benefit to our children. To this end, it is critical that teachers represented through Scottsdale Education Association as an entity are officially recognized by the SUD Board of Governors. Governing Board Members, many of you attended the VIP Accountability Session that we held last fall. It was our honor to have you there, and we were proud to present that with your help. And there, you committed at the time to the voters to recognize the Teachers Association as the bargaining agent. We commend you for your action on this critical campaign promise and to improve student education and support of our valued educators. We pledge to continue to support the district and the importance of public education that has been the very backbone of this community of Scottsdale that we love. Thank you for your time. Thank you for what you do.
The board will now move to Agenda Item 7, Information Discussion Items 7A. Student Advisory Board April Presentation Chaparral and Desert Mountain High School. Dr. Menzel.
Thank you, President Greenberg. I'd like to invite Caroline and Trex to the podium. We are so proud of our students and look forward to your presentation at every one of these governing board meetings. I don't know if Dr. Sakos has any introductory remarks, or if you guys are ready to go with the show. You're on.
Okay. Hello, Board Members, President and Vice President, and Dr. Menzel. So we have some updates from the Student Advisory Board. Okay, that's the button. Okay, so some of the updates was recent town halls where at Coronado and Chaparral, students like these town halls, they like being able to speak to their principals and their teachers, and they like that, and they want more town halls happening at their schools. And not even if it's on a town hall format, even an online format, they just want those to happen because they like speaking to their teachers. Also, right now, the Student Advisory Board is working on a future partnership with the SUSD Foundation with Innovation Fund. We have a subcommittee working on that. And also, we had a strategic planning design meeting with the, we had a meeting with them this week, last week, and what we talked about were, some of the things we talked about was, how has the SUSD district prepared you for success in the future? Some of us said leadership, some of us said responsibility and community service, and these were some of the words that were said there and what has prepared us for the future. These are some of the words that we'd like to see included in the SUSD mission statement next year: technology, diversity, educated, open-minded, and that's just some of many. Now, Mohave teacher, Mr. Tim Verde, and sorry if I mispronounced that, sorry. We were asked by him, if we were in charge, what would we do? And one of the things we said was expand college and career opportunities to freshmen and sophomores and help build them up and build a great character from the beginning of high school to the end of high school to get them ready for college. Also, embrace language and different cultures, provide courses in financial awareness, embrace student and faculty relationships, equal opportunities for sports, focus on social and emotional support. Now, with our school spotlight for Chaparral and Desert Mountain, we have Caroline Carter for Chaparral, and joining us today is Principal Difort, and our representative for Chaparral is Kate McDowell, but today's gonna be Caroline Carter, our president presenting.
Good afternoon, President Greenberg, Vice President Sanowski, Board Members, Mrs. Wagner, and guests. My name is Caroline Carter, and I'm currently a senior at Chaparral High School and also the president of the SUSD Student Advisory Board. So, okay, so today I'm here representing Chaparral as their senator, but as Trex said before, Kate McDowell is gonna be from here now on representing Chaparral, but I'm filling in for her today. Okay, so here we are. So at Chaparral, we have a few points of pride, and those include our academics, athletics, arts, and leadership and club opportunities for our students, all within a safe and supportive learning environment. At Chaparral, our academics is highly appreciated. We offer, we have 17 capstone graduates this year. We also offer 23 AP courses and over 28 honors classes. 61% of the students enrolled in Chaparral are in honors classes, and 50% of the students are enrolled in AP classes. In this year, we have a record number of 1,277 AP tests being taken. Alongside with that, we have five National Merit Scholars and two National Hispanic Scholars. At Chaparral, this year, we have a 98% graduation rate, and 96% of graduates enrolled are enrolled in higher education for the next year to come. As a student who's been involved in AP and honors classes since my freshman year of high school, I do feel academically prepared for my next years in college. Another point of pride is our athletics. We are known for them, you know, for a long time now, and this year, I'm happy to say that we have won state championships in the boys and girls swimming, in football, and in cheer. And this year, we have 20 athletes signed to play sports in college, which is amazing, and we have 794 total athletes on our campus. Next major part of our school is the arts. So this year, they actually managed to put on a virtual play, which went great. We also, they also put on a play called Peter and the Starcatcher, which is the first outdoor play in the amphitheater at Chaparral. And also, in this past week, actually Freaky Friday has been going on, which got a lot of attendance. The arts are also very important as being an art student myself. We have seven students currently enrolled in AP Art, and we have student arts sent to various art competitions and museums. One to highlight is a student artist who is featured in the Arcadia News Magazine for her artwork. I also wanted to highlight that 12 art club members are participating in the Memory Project, which is one they paint portraits for children and make them feel more valued. Along with that, we have five students earning the art seal this year, the AP Art Seal. Now, at Chaparral, we have 71 clubs on campus. They're advertised each year at their annual club fair, and they are a broad span of interests from arts to academics, sports. Another big club on campus is National Honor Society, which we do have 210 members in, and this year alone have volunteered over 6,300 hours of community service and counting. One club that I'd like to highlight is Be the Change Volunteer Club. They have done copious amounts of work for the YMCA and hosted collection drives, and they are just a really wonderful club that has flourished throughout my years, and they're just doing great. Another one is Student Government, who you all know, and they have put on events every year like prom and Project Grad, and they work very hard to make our school a better place. Next thing that I'd like to highlight is our upholding traditions in the year of the pandemic. We are still planning on putting on an in-person prom, which is next month. We were able to accomplish the Yavapai Toy Drive, which was also accomplished by Student Government. We are on the road to having an in-person graduation at Salt River Fields, and our Firebird Word, our announcement, still goes on every single day, and we have our birdcage support at sporting events. Now, something fun, we this year got an emotional support crisis canine, and his name is Rocket, and he's actually here today with us, so I'm gonna welcome Rocket and Officer Lines to the podium. I'm also going to present them with some challenge coins for all of the work that they've done at Chaparral this year. They've made the students 10 million times more happy, and we love to see them on campus, so here you go.
So like I said, I am Officer Devon Lines, and this is my partner Rocket, and us at the Scottsdale Police Department, we're so happy to have partnered with Scottsdale Unified School District in creating Maricopa County's first Esro Therapy Dog. So we're the first in Maricopa County and the second in Arizona. Somehow Tucson beat us out. But I will say, since its creation back in January, I've had countless other school districts and police departments around the nation reach out wanting to mimic this great program that we've created here. So thank you, everyone, for your support, and if you ever want to get some hair on your clothes and get some love, come say hi to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Lines. So along with that, we provide a safe and supportive campus at Chaparral. We have three school security officers, over 100 cameras on campus, and social workers on campus, which they especially work in emotional support groups, and that can be one-on-one or in groups, and we also have drug intervention groups. Along with that, we've also been following the COVID-19 protocols to ensure the safety of students on campus. And so that is the end of Chaparral's presentation. I'm gonna hand it over to Somia Viswanathan, who's gonna be on the Teams Meeting, and she's gonna give you Desert Mountain's update.
Good evening, Dr. Menzel, President Greenberg, Vice President Sanowski, and Governing Board Members. My name is Somia Viswanathan, and I'm currently a senior at Desert Mountain High School, and I'm the senator on Student Advisory Board for my high school. So first, I wanted to start off with what are the best qualities of Desert Mountain? While we're very diverse and welcoming to everyone, from foreign exchange students to incoming freshmen, we try to ensure that freshmen have a smooth transition into high school by having orientation events like Future Wolves Night. And we're studious, as evidenced by the 861 AP exams and 456 IB assessments we're taking this year. We offer numerous extracurricular opportunities and have over 50 different clubs on campus. We're talented in sports, in visual arts, and performing arts, and of course, more. Next slide, please. Thank you. Moving on to some traditions and unique events. Despite COVID, our student government was still able to continue the annual tradition of Valentine's Day Hearts, where every student and staff member has a heart hung around the school with their name on it, and it's just really so much fun to try to find our friends' ones and put it on our sleeves and give it to each other. And our wonderful thespians had their spring show about two weeks ago titled Wolves of Broadway Musical Review, which consisted of different songs from a variety of musicals. I had the opportunity to watch the show in person, and it was truly such an amazing show to end my senior year with. And we have our inaugural Cultural Arts Festival this May, where students can create an art piece based on their culture and share it with everyone else. Next slide, please. And I just wanted to share some photos from all these events. On the left, you can see the Valentine's Day Hearts hung around our school on February 14th of this year, and on the right is a group shot of all our DMHS players from the night of the musical, and in the center is a photo about, that is informing about the Cultural Arts Festival.
All right. Hello, everybody. My name is Jake Dicker. I'm also a senior at Desert Mountain, and I'm gonna talk about some of the accomplishments of DM this year. Like Tony said, definitely academic focus, and you can see that by two National Merit semifinalists, two National Merit Scholars, Presidential Scholar nominees, and a few other awards, as well as in sports. We had our girls swim team win the state championship for D2. We had wrestling individual state champs runner-ups, and a wide variety of sports make the playoffs and host playoff games. As well, Zmitra Cervantes, our Athletic Director, he won the Regional Athletic Director of the Year for 5A, and I can speak with experience, as I've been a part of the baseball team for the first three years of my high school career. It's just really fun to be a part of it, family away from my own family, and we will definitely make the playoffs this year, led by our short-term, actually, number one ranked prospect in Arizona. So a lot of exciting things going on in sports and academics, as well as extracurriculars. We had seven students who made all-state orchestra and choir. We actually had our orchestra concert last night, and we have a band concert going on right now. And then, Tony mentioned a bunch of clubs. I'm gonna give a shout out to Eco Club, who created a fantastic sustainability mural, and if we go to the next slide, we can actually see that right there on the left, yes, a really cool mural that really highlighted the club and what it wanted to do, and it was very cool to kind of have something on campus that highlights what the students want to do going forward and highlighting problems in the world. As well as on the right, you can see our girls soccer team.
We also had a teen town hall recently, where students shared what they would like more support with. Some things that were shared were creating a student portal for important communications, access to mental health resources, learning opportunities for self-care, time management, and other skills, recognition of diversity, and more information about how to join and create clubs. And on the next slide, we've created what our future plan is to kind of address these problems.
Right. So we, going forward in the future, definitely looking forward to more discussions like that teen town hall that Tony was just talking about, really very cool to kind of bounce ideas off of people and have discussions as a student body. Some other things, like a yoga fitness program to help de-stress, and we talked about all those clubs to kind of help with time management, self-care, programs that appreciate diversity, really kind of expanding what Desert Mountain offers already, which is a lot. And then we also plan for other DMHS students to join the SAB. I know I had a really great time this year being a part of the SAB, and I think especially this year with all of the extenuating circumstances because of COVID, it was really great for me to be able to be involved in discussions and to be able to be heard in this environment, and I certainly want other people to be heard going forward.
And I would just like to wrap up by briefly talking about my experience on the Student Advisory Board. I was on it last year as well as this year as the Desert Mountain Senator, and I would just like to voice my appreciation for the opportunity that I've had through serving on the SAB, such as collaborating with all the other awesome student leaders from the four other high schools, giving my feedback to Dr. Menzel and Dr. Sakos during our meetings, especially during a challenging year like this school year, surveying Desert Mountain students in order to learn what their concerns were during COVID, how they all had certain challenges that we kind of helped gauge, and we presented that to the Governing Board in December, and working closely with Dr. Hirsch and just trying to help our school community, and of course, most importantly, presenting to you all the SUSD Governing Board. We can't wait to see all the incredible work that the SAB will do next year after we graduate, and we're confident that Dr. Hirsch will recruit other great student leaders to represent Desert Mountain High School next year, and thank you so much for listening.
Thank you so much for listening. Thanks for today. Trex and I are always so thankful that you guys support us. We are so grateful for it. And behalf of the SAB, we are just so happy that our voice is heard and is influencing decisions made about our education in the district. It's just so important, and it really, it makes our time here all the better. And yeah, SAB has been one of the, probably one of the greatest things to come out of high school for me. I've been a part of it since my sophomore year of high school, and I just, I love coming up here and I love voicing my opinion. up here and I love voicing my opinion, and I love collaborating with you guys. No, but it's fun. And so, yeah, I'll say anything.
I'm just thanking for the opportunity. I can't wait to work with you guys for the next few years.
Oh, yeah. Leaving in good hands with Trex.
Hopefully.
So if you have any questions or comments, fire away.
Are there any board member questions or comments? I don't see any requests.
Just a comment. I think that we may have a few future board members.
Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? I do not see any. I would just like to thank the Student Advisory Board and all the students who participated in the various activities that you identified and highlighted. I think it is a testament to our student body and just how smart and innovative and hardworking they are. And I liked a number of the points that brought up. One of the ones that really caught my eye was requesting more events for students that need to get help in all areas that they might need to get help. And that could be an early morning club that we might not perceive as an academic club, but in fact, that is the reason why a student chooses to wake up in the morning and come to our schools and attend for the whole day or to get the mental health help. And I want to do, I do want to thank the ADE and Superintendent Kathy Hoffman for, again, expanding that fund. All of these things that help our students. And as always, I ask, is there anything else that you need the Board, or you think the Board could be doing to support you? Or do you feel that you are fully supported in the work that you're doing?
We do feel fully supported. Thank you.
Good. Excellent. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Have a great night. The Board will now move to Agenda Item 8, Consent Agenda. The Chair moves to approve the Consent Agenda as amended. Is there a second? Board Member Beckman seconds. It is moved and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries 5-0, and the Consent Agenda as amended is approved. We will now move to Agenda Item 8, Q, Consent Agenda, Authorization of Expenditure Parking Lot Improvement Projects at 11 School Campuses. Correct. We pulled it. So we don't have to vote to table it?
President Greenberg, Vice President Sanowski, Dr. Menzel, members of the Governing Board, if the agenda has, if the Agenda Item has been pulled by the Superintendent, and when you voted to amend the agenda, you adopted the amended agenda, you do not need to move to table it at this time.
Thank you, Ms. McLennan. That clarifies that matter. The Board will now move to Agenda Item 9, Public Comments. Are there any further public comment cards? The Board will now move to Agenda Item 10A, Action Item, Implementation for the 2021-2022 School Year in the Following Areas, 68 English Language Arts, 912 English Language Arts, AP Literature, AP Language, and AP Psychology. Dr. Menzel.
Thank you, President Greenberg, Vice President Sanowski, and members of the Governing Board. I'm going to ask Dr. Garen to come to the podium, and while she does, I want to make a few introductory comments. I know that members of the Governing Board have received quite a few emails and heard comments tonight at the podium with respect to our process, and Dr. Garen and her team will be able to answer some of those specific questions. There are a couple of other things that I think are worth pointing out tonight in terms of information that's been circulating, and I think it's important to talk about because we, as a district, are committed to transparency, and we are committed to an inclusive process with our community as it relates to our curriculum. But we're also committed to being able to share information openly. So there have been some pieces of information that have circulated that are not quite accurate with respect to this curriculum adoption this evening. And one of those things relates to an assertion that this curriculum adoption is adopting critical race theory. And when you look at SEVAS and the curriculum that's being proposed, there's no critical race theory component in the ELA curriculum. There is on SEVAS's website, information about having culturally responsive pedagogy and culturally responsive practices. One of the things that, when we discuss difficult topics, and that's one of the things that was mentioned earlier this evening, defining our terms is really important. As a diverse district with students from all different types of race, ethnic, and socioeconomic backgrounds, we strive to be culturally responsive to our student body and in our curriculum. That's different than critical race theory. And I think it's really important, as we entertain these conversations, to be clear about the terms that we're discussing, and also to be transparent. So the question about parental involvement, Dr. Garen can talk about the process that we've utilized, but I'll say that on a go-forward basis, we'll do more. We have opportunities to make sure that all of our families receive communication about opportunities to participate on committees, and we'll have a process where we can both notify them of the opportunities and invite participation from a broad cross-sector across Scottsdale. So that's one of our commitments for process improvement. The other thing that surfaced that I think is important just to highlight, it was mentioned by one of the parents related to Brain Pop, which is supplemental support for our curriculum. It's not the curriculum itself, and there were changes made on the digital platform. When the concerns were brought to our attention, we investigated with our teaching and learning team, moved very quickly because there were some things that we saw that were disconcerting, particularly without the guidance and support of adult teachers and mentors in the classroom. That was new learning for us in terms of what was there, and raised an important point, and that is, we need to have a process as a district for monitoring online digital resources and supports that can change over time and be different than what's brought forward to the Governing Board for consideration. So I look at all of these things as opportunities to improve our practices in service of our students, to ensure that we're providing the highest quality teaching and learning opportunities, and that our students are able to succeed. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Garen to provide some additional context on process, and then answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Menzel, President Greenberg, Vice President Sanowski, Board Members, Gladys, and guests. So I just wanted to provide a couple clarifying comments about some of the concerns we've received, and then, of course, my team is here. We'd be happy to answer any questions. So there has been, as you can imagine, there are so many committee opportunities on educational services, and some committees are more popular than others. We had no problem at all recruiting parents for our return-to-learn groups when we, in the middle of the pandemic. There was so much interest in how to keep kids safe and how to provide different learning models. Calendar Committee, on the other hand, was not one of our most popular committees. So we work hand-in-hand with Scottsdale Parent Council, and the President and her leadership team are so responsive and spend a lot of time helping us recruit. As Dr. Menzel said, this is a moment where we can reflect on how can we get the word out? How can we expand? How can we improve? So knowing that not everyone is involved with all the associations, particularly parents, we can use our website. Their team is so talented about putting little tags and flashes that are temporary, that can direct people. And I thought we could create a committee hub that anyone is interested in getting involved, not just in curriculum committees, but any committees can go and select. The other thing we've just developed in teaching and learning through looking at Dr. Menzel's strategic planning process is an interest form. So people fill out why they want to participate, and I think that really helps with the committee selection process and getting a well-rounded group and hearing voices we might not normally hear. So though this process was inclusive, because we sought parent help, we didn't have as much parent interest as in other committees, but we also can reflect on how to improve it. We are required by statute to provide textbook access when we're doing an adoption. And typically, we line up textbooks in various places and invite people to come in and look through the textbooks. And we don't get a great turnout on that. Because of COVID, and in the early days, when we were so concerned about surface contact, we were not able to do that. We considered holding this adoption, but we heard from our secondary teachers that the materials were outdated, we did not want to wait another year, and they were willing to work through the pandemic, and they found a way to do it. We worked with our vendors to ask them to put their curriculum on the website. This is something that they haven't done before. These are copyrighted, protected materials that they spend millions of dollars developing. So it's not something that you can just put on the website, but they understood our desire to move forward. And so that's why you use a password. So it is, it can be a little confusing or cumbersome to some to try to look through it all. There is certainly more than just advertising or samples. You can dig deep into all the curriculum. But when you want to look at our curriculum currently, K-12, you can come to District Office and check out books, and we're happy to do that. We list all the vendors and all the programs, but again, because of copyright laws, we can't have everything digital. But if you're a parent, you can go under Student View and look at your child's textbook anytime. The students all have logins to those, and you're welcome to do that, and we can look at providing temporary parent access with our vendors as well. So as we learn from the pandemic, as we move into more and more of virtual world with our instructional materials, we have to, use one of our new favorite words, pivot, and look at the way we did things before and understand our new challenges. Dr. Menzel brought up a challenge of ever-changing curriculum. So there's a point of pride with some of these supplemental materials, that they keep improving and updating them. But when we bring an adoption, our materials to you, we vet it very carefully with stakeholders, and we present it to you for your review. So it is problematic when things change. We've talked to our vendor with this textbook adoption, and the textbook will not change. The digital textbook, what could improve is some ease of access, teachers being able to share an assessment with other teachers, those kind of tools. But we're not going to see a new story or a new novel without us being notified and us vetting it. So with our formal adoptions, we feel very confident. With these supplemental material tools, such as Brain Pop, we need to navigate how we can be assured that what is added, we've reviewed, we determine that it is age-appropriate, aligned to the standards, and teachers can access and make decisions on having guided conversations around sensitive topics. That instructional moment, the expertise of the teacher is so important, and we need to rely on that for these areas. Is it, and yes, is there any questions?
Mr. or Member Beckman.
Thank you for this. Dr. Menzel, thank you for answering quite a few of my questions. I also appreciate that we're always trying to improve on our process, and acknowledging that, I think, is really important. Separating the two, the committee hub, I think is a fantastic idea. We have so many committees out there right now. I would love to see some sort of resource that discusses what is existing and what we're developing, because parents don't know. And the second part of that is the accessibility. I know that you had the content to this posted on our website. It's there. But we've heard repeatedly, it's very difficult to find this type of thing, and a parent, unless they're already concerned and someone has piqued their interest, isn't just perusing our website, looking through links on a daily basis. So I think we have to do a better job at communicating to our parents what we're looking at, what's out there, and the ease of use has got to be very important there. The synergy, you mentioned something interesting on synergy, that the parents can go on and view the digital content at any time? Can you explain that a little more?
So actually, through Clever, students have access to so much of our materials, right, with the single sign-on. They can access digital textbooks. And so certainly, parents can look at what we currently have through that. And just one idea from there is, could we provide parents some temporary access if they want to review something digitally as well? So we can explore that.
So with this current adoption, with the supplemental material, and you said in the digital context, as they updated or change it, will a parent be able to request access and go on and look at that there?
So there will not be, this is what we're proposing for 912. There will be an actual textbook, a class set in each classroom, and then each student will have a digital textbook, which will be an exact duplicate of the hard copy, the actual textbook. So that will not change, because if they would change the digital, it wouldn't match. But what I'm saying is that a parent can look through the student's single sign-on and look at any of their current textbooks, or if they'd like to pick up hard copies, we can present those as well.
Okay. Interesting. I did not know that. I go on synergy all the time. So thank you for pointing that out. Thank you.
Are there any other board member questions or comments? Dr. Garen, a question for you. We are required to have the textbooks available for a 60-day period for public inspection. We did do that.
Absolutely.
And is there any difference between doing it online versus having it at the District Office?
Actually, I think it presents additional access to others, but we did seek clarification to make sure that we would meet the requirements of the statute. We called ADE, and, you know, this is all new to have a pandemic and not really know what to do. And so we met the spirit of it, and actually, I think, moving forward, we would want to do both, because I think through the pandemic, we're going to have innovations that are going to improve our practices and processes, and not everyone can come down to a building and sit and look through a textbook. So though we have the checkout process, and though we have them in certain places, why wouldn't we do both, so people can also view? Moving forward, trying to simplify, and we did work with our vendor to try to provide textbook simple links, because it was confusing. There's so much, so many resources that you could look through, that it can be overwhelming. It's a benefit to have so many resources, but it is, that's why it takes the committee so much time to vet everything.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that you sought clarification as to whether we properly complied there. I think that's a great idea, that moving forward, even though there won't hopefully be pandemic considerations in place and restrictions, that we provide it both in-person for textbook review to comply with the law, but also online. And we do have to acknowledge that there are significant copyright issues involved when any publisher puts documents online. There is almost always somebody who will try to download it. I also think, you know, moving forward, the committee idea is excellent, and I know board members have discussed before the importance of putting Superintendent Committee pages together on the website, putting Governing Board Committee pages on the website to list membership, and, you know, what is being discussed in that work. We do, I think, really need to do that, not just for this work, you know, even though that's where the committee concern is tonight, but in general. And I also think that a good process moving forward would be to email all families notice when there is curriculum available online for review that is pending approval. Again, you know, I want to be very clear, because of the types of concerns we've received, the process in the district in the past, to the best of my knowledge, has been to not do these things. The process we follow, though, is fully compliant with the law. The issue is, how can we be better and improve? Because that's what our district is all about, you know, focusing on our strengths, focusing on our weaknesses, and creating that path for improvement. And I think that is an excellent suggestion that you've put forward. And in general, from a philosophical point, I personally, as a board member, feel that, you know, my view is oversight and compliance. And if you're complying with the law, if you have the processes in place, and we're looking on ways to constantly improve those processes to adopt this curriculum, that is my role, that is my job, I personally feel. I don't think it is my job to interfere or direct what type of curriculum gets adopted. We have seen school boards in plenty of states since the 1800s get into these types of discussions as to what books should be banned, what books should be accepted, what... And I think the problem is, is that that is not a smart path to go down. There are books on our supplemental reading list I personally would never read, but that doesn't mean that those aren't, that they don't have academic merit, and that those shouldn't be read in the proper context, age-appropriate level, you know, with staff at that time. And many of our exams, like AP exams, require that we provide students certain supplemental reading, because they will have to answer essay questions about them on their exams. So I think you've done a great job here. I think we've identified areas for improvement, and I think that can only make us better in the long run. Board Member Beckman.
One last question, because you've brought this up. How do we routinely notify parents when the curriculum is available for them to take a look at?
So I don't know if Ms. Redner, if you want to add anything, but we have the website that we share, principals are aware, teachers are aware, and we share it with Scottsdale Parent Council. And so you can actually go on the website and see agendas minutes from each meeting, and the timeline is really helpful as well. So to your point... So to your point, if you don't continually check the website, you might not know that it is happening. But certainly, the teachers are very involved, and we work with Scottsdale Parent Council to have parent voice in the selection process. So I think an area of improvement is communication, to really get the word out there about our adoptions.
Thank you for that, because I do think that's that piece. If we would find a way to communicate to our families during, before and during the process that this is happening, to get, you know, opportunity for their buy-in, to be able to look at what we're doing, I think that it only makes for a better process. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to thank the committee and the leadership from Dr. Fountain, Ms. Redner, Paul Becker, and all the English Language Arts teachers that served countless hours on this committee. Their work was truly appreciated. So thank you.
Are there any further board member questions or comments on this action item? Do I have a motion, oh, Dr. Menzel, do you have any further questions or comments?
I do not at this time, except for to say that it's a partnership with our parents, our teachers, and the leadership here to put this together, and we'll continue to work to improve.
Excellent. Do I have a motion to approve action item, action item 10A, implementation for the 2021-2022 school year in the following areas, 6 to 8 English Language Arts, 9 to 12 English Language Arts, AP Literature, AP Language, and AP Psychology. Board member Hartwell's moves, do we have a second?
Second.
Vice President Sanowski seconds. It is moved and seconded that we approve agenda item 10A, action item 10A as presented. Is there any further debate? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries 5-0, and action item 10A is approved. The board will now move to action item 10B, approval of purchase of teacher laptops. Dr. Menzel.
Thank you, President Greenberg. I'd like to invite Dr. Sweeney to the podium. Actually, items 10B, 10C, and 10D all relate to technology purchase and recommendation. And I think Dr. Sweeney is prepared to just bullet point what each of these three are before we entertain any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Menzel, President Greenberg, Vice President Sanowski, members of the governing board. The three items really do all go together. I believe Dr. Menzel shared a background memo that I had prepared, and the short version of it is, we are in year four of a five-year cycle on teacher laptops. And we started poking at this a few months ago and decided it's a much more manageable task to do this in two phases, as opposed to waiting through that fifth year next year and trying to come up and refresh all of the teacher laptops at the same time. That discussion led to a discussion about the SmartBoards and the new interactive flat panels that we've been using in the rebuilds at the schools in the South. And so we started looking at these two things together. And from a management of this project perspective, we looked at, how can we do this in two phases, relatively equal numbers, relatively equal costs, and make it doable? So we looked at the three complexes here in the South, Coronado, Arcadia, and Saguaro, and the two in the North, Chaparral and Desert Mountain, and grouped them like that. And so what you're seeing here tonight, it's really much simpler than it might sound, because we're straddling three fiscal years to accomplish a project in 18 months, basically. So this is the first kickoff of this with FY '21 money to pay for these laptops, to pay for the interactive flat panels, and to pay for the minis that run those flat panels. At the second meeting in May, I will be back before you, proposing the purchase of an additional 530 laptops. That will be coming from fiscal year '22 budget, and that will provide us all of the laptops that we need for the teachers here in these three complexes, plus an additional 280 interactive flat panels, again, coming from fiscal year '22 budget. So with that, we will be able to address all the needs at the three complexes in the South. In the spring of next year, my successor will be standing here with a proposal for FY '23 money to purchase the flat panels to go in the complexes in the North, that if everything goes, this plan would be installed before the '22-'23 school year. So I hope that all makes sense. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Are there any board member questions or comments about item 10B, approval of purchase of teacher laptops? There are no questions at this time. The chair moves to approve action item 10B, approval of purchase of teacher laptops. Is there a second?
Second.
Vice President Sanowski seconds. Is there any further debate? It is moved and seconded that the board approve action item 10B, approval of purchase of teacher laptops. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries 5-0. The board will now move to action item 10C, approval of purchase of interactive flat panels, IFPs. Dr. Menzel.
Unless there are questions, I think that's part of the plan that was just outlined.
Are there any questions or comments about action item 10C, approval of purchase of interactive flat panels? Vice President Sanowski.
Yes, I'd just like to make note for the public that the current SmartBoards that, sorry, the current SmartBoards that are in the classrooms are 10 to 12 years old, and it's time for them to be replaced.
It's time. It is definitely time.
And thank you, by the way, for answering my questions.
You are welcome.
In advance.
Vice President Sanowski brings up a good point. We did ask and have the opportunity to review the memo in advance and ask questions, and I appreciate you answering them and providing those answers to the board. The chair moves to approve action item 10C, approval of purchase of interactive flat panels, IFPs. Is there a second?
Second.
Board member Hartwell's seconds. It is moved and seconded that the board approve action item 10C, approval of purchase of interactive flat panels. Is there any further debate? Dr. Menzel, any further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries 5-0. The board will now move to action item 10D, approval of purchase of 170 Lenovo M80Q tiny processors. Are there any questions or comments? Dr. Menzel? The chair moves to approve action item 10D, approval of purchase of 170 Lenovo M80Q tiny processors. Is there a second?
Second.
Vice President Sanowski seconds. It is moved and seconded that the board approve action item 10D, approval of purchase of 170 Lenovo M80Q tiny processors. Any further debate? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The board will now move to action item 10E, pupil transportation school bus purchase. Dr. Menzel.
You have in front of you a recommendation from Brendan Wagner, Director of Transportation, with respect to purchase of five additional buses under the 2016 bond issue. We're happy to answer any questions you have, and Brendan is in the cloud if we need to ask him something technical that we cannot answer in the room.
Vice President Sanowski.
Yeah, I do have some questions about the buses. What is the current typical fill rate on our buses, the size and capacity that we see driving around the city of Scottsdale?
So there are 84-passenger buses, and depending on whether it's AM or PM, we're averaging about 40% ridership in the morning, 60% in the afternoon for high school and middle school, 25% in the morning, and 30% in the afternoon for elementary school.
Has there been any thought or discussion about altering the size of our buses that we are purchasing?
So we previously discussed moving from the 84-passenger transit bus to the 77 conventional bus, which is only seven fewer students, and it's a different configuration, not consistent with our other buses. If you were to go to a much smaller bus or mini bus, the challenge is that we use these buses not only for AM and PM transportation, but also for field trips and for other purposes. And so you then dramatically reduce the availability of being able to provide that transport for those other student activities. And so while we considered it, given all of the factors, it didn't make sense in the long run, given our overall transportation needs.
Has there been any discussion, or I guess I'd like to say I'd like to encourage discussion, about increasing ridership? I know at one of the teen town halls, I think it was at Chaparral, there was a conversation about student parking, availability of the parking, and encouraging students to ride the bus more frequently. Anyone who's ever been on a campus at drop-off or pickup time know that it's pretty chaotic. And then I think about the, you know, issues with our environment, with cars sitting and stalling and waiting for 15 minutes to 40 minutes, waiting for their kids to be dismissed. So, by the way, I did see something that was really cool on one of the campuses, and I don't recall which one, but they had signs reminding parents to please turn off their engines, and maybe that's something that we could do in the parent pickup and drop-off. But back to the issue of ridership, is there a way for us to provide incentives for students to ride the buses?
I heard the same request at the Chaparral Teen Town Hall, and it's one of those things where I think we need to look into, whether or not there's anything that we can do, either in partnership with another governmental entity or something creative here. But having seen some of the parking challenges, I can understand why that would be something we'd like to do. Also, having been a high school student myself, I understand some of the reluctance, so I have to figure out what's the right incentive. We should probably ask our SAB representatives what the right incentive would be.
Okay, this is something I want, you know, we talk about doing things better.
Right.
I think when kids have one drop-off, a parent is waiting in line and then to pick them up, I think we could be doing better with our transportation.
Are there any further questions or comments? Board member Beckman.
So, refresh my memory, when we discussed transportation six months ago, a year ago, when we were talking about the technology, what came of that? And are these buses, do they have that dynamic feature that we were talking about back then with regard to the new technology on them? Can you give me kind of an update with regard to these new five buses?
Sure. We put a pause on the acquisition of the updated technology for routing and the tracking of the buses, the GPS system. That has been reviewed and revised and competitively procured, and within the next few months, we should be able to bring that recommendation forward. That'll be a comprehensive package and would be added to these five buses, so these are essentially just the buses. We went back and redid the process related to the software and the technology to make sure the district was getting the best value for its investment.
Okay, so because part of that, if I recall, was that there was sort of some outdated buses that didn't sync with that new technology, or there was something that wasn't consistent with what they needed, and these will be fine with whatever technology you're bringing forward and proposing?
Yes, they'll be compatible.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other board member questions or comments? I think a good incentive would be moving the parking lot really far away to take the bus there, especially in this heat. The chair moves to approve agenda item, or action item 10E, pupil transportation school bus purchase. Is there a second?
Shannon.
Board member Beckman seconds. It is moved and seconded that the board approve action item 10E, pupil transportation school bus purchase. Is there any further debate? Dr. Menzel? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries 5-0. The board will now move to action item 10F, tentative approval of capital budget for the 2021-2022 school year. Dr. Menzel.
I would like to turn it over to Shannon Crozier to present the preliminary capital outlay and bond budget for the upcoming school year.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Greenberg, Vice President Sanowski, members of the board, Dr. Menzel and guests. Tonight, we're looking at the tentative approval for bond and capital outlay for the 21-22 school year. This is just looking at where we anticipate expenditures being for those areas. We will come forth with a proposed budget based off of this information in June, and then an adopted budget the end of June, but this is just to get us started so that our schools can start, our schools and departments can start putting in requisitions for next school year. So with that, the first part of this is that this is the first year we fully expect that the state will fully restore the district additional assistance, which is a great thing. That provides us with an additional $1.7 million for our DAW, helps out with our capital accounts. We anticipate that being fully restored at $9.8 million with an additional $4 million in carryover. It could be more, but at this point, capital expenditures are typically higher dollar amounts, so it's hard to estimate this early on, what that will end with. But that would put us at $13.8 million for our DAW budget for next year. The DAW budget is based off of the prior year ADM, meaning that next year's DAW budget will be based off of our ADM for this year. That helps with predicting how much our DAW will be, or capital will be. However, for this year, it means it's based off of lower student ADM than what we're used to seeing, so it's a little bit lower than what we'd like to see, but we anticipate that being fully restored, next year having our ADM increase, and that'll help us in the future years with our capital. We did increase or maintain all of the current per pupil allocations for library, athletics, physical education, fine arts, furniture fixtures, and equipment. Just to give you an idea of what that is, when we allocate that out to the schools, we do it based off the 100th day count for this year. That's the best we have to be able to tell what it'll be for next year. For FF and E, we figure that to be $46.50. For PE, we do an allocation for PE, that's going to be $2.53, that's the exact same amount as it was in the past. We are increasing library, fine arts, and athletics by just a little bit, so because our enrollment is down, we still have the same dollar amount, we're able to increase the amount per pupil to give to those schools. And then the bond reflects the remaining bond funds, since we've completed our final bond sale back in February. This is just taking a look at the different capital counts that we have, as well as bond, adjacent ways, and our plant fund, and where we anticipate allocating those funds at. I'll go into a little bit more detail on future slides, but this just gives an idea of where we anticipate those expenditures being, between capital override, which are the approved pamphlet authorized by our voters on how to spend those funds. That's at the 8.5 million, so it continues with that 8.5 million, but we have additional funds to carry over for next year for that. This just continues on. One thing I will say was, since we were just talking about buses and the software that we're looking at for the transportation, that DAW budget in there does include what we anticipate the cost being for that software, because we know we won't get that purchased and installed before June 30th, so we do have that estimated in there. We were looking at the previous slide, had the technology, the requests that Mr. Sweeney was just up here providing, we've already accounted those into our budget for next year, so those things are accounted in those various areas. So with that, like I said, with the district additional assistance, we anticipate that being $9.8 million. We allow our schools and departments to carry over 25% of their original allocation, so we estimate that 2.1 of that will be carry forward into the new year, and allocated back out to those schools that had those requests. We're anticipating a $4 million rollover, but like I said, 2.1 million of that is for carryover that we allow for the school, for the departments and schools, so that brings us up to the $13.8 million for district additional assistance. Again, the capital override is 8.5 million, but with carry forward, we'll have that at 10.5 million. Adjacent ways, we've been budgeting for that, and actually, it's an additional levy that we've put to our taxpayers for several years. It seems like it was something we just consistently did every single year, even though we weren't spending it all. So for the last few years, we've been able to, we've had enough cash on hand to be able to go and budget those things, but not have to pass that additional levy on to our taxpayers. We will continue that again for next school year, so we have the $3 million budgeted, but we won't need to ask for additional funds for our taxpayers for that. It will probably be the last year we have to do that. We'll probably have to look at a small amount in the future. But those funds help with our school rebuilds, when we do those, with putting in the fire lanes and bus lanes and the easements. Our bond, as you know, we finished that portion up with it, so that just leaves the 76 million, which we pretty much have planned out between finishing up the projects that we've got going at Ho-Hokum, we will be starting the Kiva rebuild, we've got potentially Pueblo, who would be the next one, that was the last one on the list, as well as our lifecycle projects, so that'll complete that out. We have three years to spend those funds, so we've got to, we'll start seeing those funds decrease here. And then our school plant has 7.1 million in it. This wasn't included in, it was something we talked about. This wasn't included in, it was something we talked about yesterday with the Finance and Operations Team, but we are looking at with that school plant, we have a facility, the Apache Bus Barn, which is down here in this neighborhood here, that several, we have a large contingency of transportation workers that work down there, and it needs to be brought up to better standards, so we'll be looking, we'll be bringing that back to the Board later this year as to spending some funds to bring that facility up to a better location for our employees and staff there. That isn't figured in in that 7.1 million, but that's where we'll be looking at spending that from. So just some of the highlights within what we're looking at, big expenditures are always in technology, and so those laptops that we just talked about, we have a copier lease, that's the second year of a three-year lease, refreshing the laptops for teachers, technology in the classroom, the view boards, doc cams continuing, we have quite a bit that we spend on the various district software programs. In the land and building, again, that'll be the HVAC units, parking lots, facility upgrades, just the tools that they need to continue to do the work and keep our schools looking good and safe. Curriculum, we'll have a textbook adoption that will be in there, we've budgeted 3 million for that. If we need more, we anticipate being able to roll over additional funds from this year into there, if that's needed. Then we have the supplemental software, instructional materials that they're purchasing from there. And then with the transportation, again, we're looking at the software, that'll be a big chunk of it, but just the parts that are needed to keep our vehicles safe and buses running and on the road and our white fleet up and running as well. On the bond, we have a lot of different projects we're working on, having to do with fencing, painting, parking lots, roof maintenance, those types of things, just keeping, you know, the lifecycle things that have to happen on our campuses to keep them functioning well, as well as Tavon, looking at some renovations over at that space. Again, more of the schools, what we're looking at doing, and then finally, the Kiva rebuild, remodel, depending on how they decide to move forward with that. And then Pueblo being the last school that was on that list of schools to look at rebuilding, remodeling would be the last one on there. With that, do you have any questions?
Vice President Sanowski?
Thank you. What is the current status of completing the renovation at Navajo? Is there, are there plans to complete that building that is along Camelback?
I'm going to defer to Dennis on that question.
Dr. Menzel, would you like to speak first?
Yeah, Dennis can speak about a recent conversation that I believe he and Dr. Hoggigot had with the principal over at Navajo, and there are plans for finishing that final building, Building D, I believe it is.
Good evening, President Greenberg, members of the Board, Dr. Menzel. We recently visited with Matt Patzoff. Dr. Hoggigot and myself walked the building, talked about Matt's hopes and dreams for the building, and so we're going to start through that process. We already have construction documents from the previous fire renovation, we put that on hold because of their school size, but with their special programs and everything they've got going on, they do need the space, so we're going to start that conversation. I'm hoping to put that construction together for fall break, work it through the fall into the winter and turn it over for the new year, new calendar year. So that's kind of the plan at this point. We're going to drill down and get some more information and figure out exactly what we need to do, space program that building. It's actually 12, has the capacity for 12 classrooms, but I don't think that's ultimately what we'll do. Matt had some ideas to help boost his STEAM program, and so we're going to have those conversations. We'll probably put together a little mini visioning group for just that building, so we get what that community needs for that building, so more to come real soon.
Super, thank you.
You're welcome.
Board Member Beckman?
Now, I have two questions. So I assume that will be presented in the context of the overall bond budget remaining with regard to determining Pueblo, funds availability, finishing Kiva, okay, because big fan of Navajo, but I know that we had discussed things that, okay, thank you. Shannon, can you let the community know again, where are we with the capital override? When are we going to have to start having that discussion?
We will actually start having that discussion fairly soon, but we have a few, we have about two more years before we need to go down that road. So the capital override expires in '23-'24, so we would have that discussion in...
Next year.
I'm sorry?
Start talking about it maybe next year.
Yeah, we'll be starting to talk about it soon. So that would then go on the ballot in November of '23, for the '23-'24.
So we kind of need to have a discussion about that sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
I was just going to add, the Finance and Facilities Committee is starting the conversation about our facilities plan long range, because that information is going to be required in order to engage in next step on the override.
Last question, super quick. With the adjacent ways expenditures, did you have the parking lot in there? Because I didn't necessarily see that, and yeah, I know that we're not talking about the, because that item was tabled, but for your budget...
That was actually out of bond, yeah, okay, so part of it was bond, part of it was...
Adjacent ways.
Yeah, adjacent ways. We do have that, that 3 million is based off what we anticipate carrying over from this year into it, so that is figured in.
To potentially be used for the repaving projects, should it come?
I think the bulk of that was coming from bond.
But it was half, half and half.
Yeah, yeah, and so that's figured in.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Board Member Hartwells?
Thank you. So one question on, yeah, well, I guess we can't pull the slide up.
I can go backwards.
On the anticipated capital, the CapEx, the last of the slides where, has textbook adoption?
Yes.
Okay, there's a $3 million out of the DA, and I guess my, the question isn't necessarily specific to how did you get to 3 million, but rather, was it informed by considering that the costs, would textbook adoption costs decline with more online materials rather than hardback textbooks?
It's really, I know the next curriculum adoption that they're doing is a larger adoption, which typically is more expensive, so a couple of the factors that we looked at is what have we been budgeting for them, as well as have we been within range or not within range with that? 3 million has been what we've been budgeting for textbook curriculum adoptions. That being said, you know, we did ask, is this too much? Is this not enough? Where are we going to fall with that? And because, and I believe we're doing an ELA adoption next year, which is much larger adoption, they anticipate the expenses, there's actually a concern is if 3 million will be fully enough to do that.
Okay.
Because it's a much larger textbook adoption.
Dr. Garen, you had commented at the last board meeting, we talked about the curriculum adoption and that there would be a large textbook adoption for the primary ELA, if I recall, but my question is really more about going forward, is really hardback books, where we're staying with textbook adoptions? Is it more software adoptions?
So typically, what we're doing right now is providing a class set to help with fatigue, different learning styles, sometimes, you know, you just, you're just on the computer so long and you want to flip through a textbook, so to have a class set in the room that the students don't have to carry home, does save us some money, it does vary, because the vendors still need to make a profit for each, you know, textbook, whether it be virtual or an actual paper. So it varies, sometimes it's exactly the same, so I think it varies with adoptions. But an ELAK5 adoption is one of the most costly, when you think of all the tangibles that students need to learn to read, some, there's always manipulatives with the letters and the big books, and you just, when you enter a kindergarten class, you can see there's a ton of tools for literacy, so it is one of our more expensive adoptions.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then I just had a comment, Dr. Menzel mentioned the Facilities and Finance Committee, or rather Finance and Facilities Committee, and we did meet earlier this week, it seems like eons ago, yesterday, and Mr. Reiler did go through more specifically, the, in more detail, some of the projected rebuilds and renovations that were on the slides that Ms. Crozier just showed. So lots of good things coming, and it is all money that was allocated by the taxpayers for these specific purposes, so I think that this needs to be reinforced to the community that this is funds that were line item, specifically line item for these types of activities, and I also want to thank you for putting some momentum behind the D building at the Navajo Elementary for STEAM pre-K. Thank you, thanks Shannon.
Are there any other questions or comments about Agenda Item 10F, Tentative Approval of Capital Budget for the 2021-2022 School Year? Shannon, could you repeat again, which November did you say that we would likely have to go for the capital?
I believe it is November of '23.
But it ends in '23-'24?
No, yes, it would be, I'm sorry, November '23 is when we need to go out with it, it would end '24-'25.
Oh, okay, I see.
I'm sorry, I had that up.
So we would have, should we...
We have a little bit of time, we don't have, there's a short amount of time in there, it's not something we need to start talking right away about, but it is something we'll start looking at in the future. One of the things we are doing, we don't have a five-year capital plan, and so we'll start this summer working on putting together a team that will start looking at our five-year capital, not only capital but bond plan, so that will start to encompass what do we need to do, what are anticipated costs and needs for capital, capital override, bond and things moving forward, so we have that plan that we can keep updating each year. So we'll have that in place before we start talking about capital override, what that looks like, what the dollar amount looks like for that.
But the point of clarification being that if we go out and it, should it fail, we would then have another year to go out for it, a second year in a row, before we lost it?
Well, so the capital override doesn't, like MNO override, you have to, you have to go out earlier so that if it fails, you have to start reducing it by a third each year, so you have a three-year window that you need to pass it in, or because it starts going down every, a third. With bond, you have it, and then it just stops, when it ends, it ends, so if you don't pass it before it ends, then it just goes away. There's no like, there's no phasing out of it, you just, you have the 8.5 million dollars, if we don't pass it, then that next school, you know, in November, then that next school year, we would just not have the 8.5 million. Any carryover we would have, but there would not be any additional funds left, so it's not the same as the MNO override in that we don't have to phase it out.
Right, what I guess, what my point is, is that we should go out for it the year before...
We can.
The final year, no, so that if it does fail with the voters, then we have another year of that funding to also try and go out a second time with the voters.
We do have that option, yes.
Before, that was, so I appreciate that.
Yes.
Clarification. On the textbook point, you know, I don't know if later on, since this is just the tentative approval, whether that number will be revised upwards. I don't know what the cost savings are, if there are cost savings between digital and physical content. I've found in my own work that digital content usually costs the same, but I don't know, because I'm not an expert on the textbook area. I do think, though, that personal preference and education styles, also internet access and technology access at home, even though we do provide hotspots and mobile hotspots and laptops to all students, you know, there are students who just prefer using a textbook at home, or because of, you know, being on computers all day, they would prefer to have that textbook, what have you, so I think we still have to strike that right balance. Are there any additional questions or comments about Action Item 10F? The Chair moves to approve Action Item 10F, Tentative Approval of Capital Budget for the 2021-2022 School Year. Is there a second?
Second.
Vice President Sanowski seconds. It's moved and seconded that the Board approve Action Item 10F, Tentative Approval of Capital Budget for the 2021-2022 School Year. Is there any further debate? Dr. Menzel? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries 5-0. The Board will now move to Action Item 10G, Approval of Revisions to Policy BEDB Agenda. Dr. Menzel?
Thank you, President Greenberg. The next four policy items will be introduced by Jennifer McLennan from Gus Rosenfeld, and I do not believe there are any changes from our first reading, but if there are, I'm sure she will highlight those and be willing to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Menzel, Governing Board President Greenberg, Ms. Sanowski, members of the Governing Board, members of Cabinet, and Ms. Wagner. Welcome. Tonight, we are looking at four Governing Board policies. The Governing Board did not have any changes to suggest after the first reading on, earlier this month, on April 6th. These policies have been available for public viewing since that time, and they were presented at the Governing Board meeting at a public meeting, so some of the concerns raised earlier tonight, I do not believe would prohibit the Governing Board from moving forward on these policies. Governing Board Policy BEDB is the proposed policy changes to the agenda, and essentially, the changes would remove public comment from being in three locations and minimize it down to being in one location. And I don't know if any of the Governing Board members have any questions regarding this item, or if you would like me to provide any further explanation.
Are there any questions or comments about policy revision, the revisions to policy My only comment, and I believe what the comment was going to, was that online, when the public goes to access our agenda for this meeting, the documents, all non-privileged documents for each of these items has not been included. We don't legally have to do that, as far as I'm aware, but I think in the interest of transparency, moving forward, we would like to include that so that they can see Policy BEDB and they can see the memos involving the school bus purchase and so on. I think that was the comment. I checked online, I don't think I saw it online, but if we could try and do that moving forward in the interest of transparency, I think that would be appropriate, again, non-privileged documents. Are there any questions or comments about Policy BEDB? The Chair moves to approve Action Item 10G, Approval of Revisions to Policy BEDB Agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Board Member Beckman seconds. It is moved and seconded that the Board approve Action Item 10G, Approval of Revisions to Policy BEDB Agenda. Is there any further debate? Dr. Menzel? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries 5-0. The Board will now move to Action Item 10H, Approval of Adoption of Policy GCCA, Professional Support Staff Sick Leave. Dr. Menzel?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Governing Board. This policy, Governing Board Policy GCCA, is a new policy for the Governing Board. It has been vetted by the Policy Committee. It would bring the Board into further compliance with Proposition 206, Earn Paid Sick Time, that's the basis for the recommendation to adopt this policy. There were no changes suggested by the Governing Board after the first read on April 6th, and I present it to you for your consideration.
Board Member Beckman?
Could you just define, I got a last minute question about this policy with regard to the potential impact of the budget of the district, and not speaking dollars specifically, but kind of define it really quickly for our public, what we're doing in addition to the sick leave policy as it stands?
So the, I can, Madam, thank you, Ms. Beckman, Board President. The district is currently paying out and providing earned paid sick time as required under state law, and what that means is that for every 30 hours worked, for an employee who would not normally get benefits, so your employees who have benefits are those who work more than a part-time schedule, who work a full FTE or full-time equivalent. For those employees who do not work a full-time equivalent, they're entitled by law to one hour of earned paid sick time for every 30 hours worked, and so this policy codifies in policy the practices that the district is already completing, so there is no additional financial impact to the district by the adoption of this policy, because you're already required under state law to provide earned paid sick time. The policy clarifies, and the district practices been, that earned paid sick time will roll over for those employees, so some examples of employees might be your substitute teachers, any part-time employee, a classified employee who works part-time, potentially even some of your part-time teachers, this would apply to. The earned paid sick leave will roll over, but there, the policy specifies that there is no payout, so it does not have any financial additional... So it does not have any financial, additional financial impact on the district with the adoption, because frankly, it's already in play.
Are there any further questions or comments about Policy GCCA? The Chair moves to approve Action Item 10H, Approval of Adoption of Policy GCCA, Professional Support Staff Sick Leave. Is there a second?
Second.
Vice President Sanowski seconds. It is moved and seconded that the Board approve Action Item 10H, Approval of Adoption of Policy GCCA, Professional Support Staff Sick Leave. Is there any further debate? Dr. Menzel? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries 5-0. The Board will now move to Action Item 10I, Approval of Adoption of Policy HA, Employment Agreements.
President Greenberg, members of the Governing Board. The Policy Committee is presenting to you for a second read tonight, Governing Board Policy HA. It's entitled Employment Agreements. This policy is a new policy for the district. It would establish by Board policy a meet-and-confer process with various employees groups. It would specifically recognize three employee groups. I'm going to read their acronyms, because I'm learning how to speak SUSD. So we have SSPA, we have SEA, and we have SAA, as the three groups that would be specifically recognized in Board policy. Policy outlines that employees are free to join or not to join employee representative organization, and then it defines meet-and-confer authorization and the meet-and-confer process and the scope of what an employment agreement may cover if the Board chooses to adopt an employment agreement. The policy specifically outlines that Governing Board policy and state law would govern over the employment agreement, so that such employment agreement would need to meet the qualifications of both state law and governing board policy. I'm available to answer any questions that you have regarding Governing Board Policy HA as proposed.
Board Member Hartwells?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McLennan. Good question, and given the public comment concern, could you just give us a high-level description of the Policy Committee's process for bringing the HA policy to the Board?
Sure.
Thank you.
So the policy was brought forward by one of the Governing Board members on the Board, by Board President Greenberg. Board President Ms. Beckman abstained from participating in the conversation during the Policy Committee. So the matter was vetted by the other members of the Policy Committee, and there were various recommendations made and revised. So for instance, the language that talks about the employee organizations right there that I've highlighted on the screen was added and wasn't in the first iteration. I made suggestions as counsel for the district, Dr. Menzel made suggestions. The group came to consensus, and it was presented as available for the first read and the second read.
Thank you. And do you, for the iteration that we're looking at, which is the same as we had a first read a few weeks ago, in your opinion, is consistent with state law and policy authority?
In my opinion, this policy is consistent with state law. The Governing Board has authorization to meet and confer with employee groups. The Governing Board has authority to recognize those employee groups. In Arizona, you have the obligation to allow access to the Governing Board for any employee who is not a part of an employee association, and you can do so, and you have done so, through things like your Let's Talk, through things like public comment, through providing your emails. So in my opinion, you are meeting the obligations that would be required of the Board if you choose to adopt.
Thank you. So my read of the policy HA as proposed, this policy serves as a framework for collaboration and interest-based problem solving by all staff and district administration in the continued support of teaching, learning, and student success. Specifically, it is my hope that this policy functions as a mechanism for high-quality outcomes that we know we can achieve when we come together, listen, and learn from each other, and to identify solutions that keep our focus on serving students. So thank you, Ms. McLennan, for answering my questions, and to the Policy Committee for bringing the policy forward.
Board Member Beckman?
Thank you for all that. Quickly, I've been asked for you to describe, since it's not in the policy itself, the difference between the employment agreement and the handbook.
The, to my knowledge, the district has one handbook adopted for one subset of its employees. There, an employee agreement, if adopted by the Governing Board, is an agreement that arises out of the meet-and-confer process, and that is specifically adopted by the Governing Board. So it becomes another set of protocol for you to address when you are pursuing interests with your employee groups or trying to define what processes are. It cannot go beyond the scope of your policy. It cannot go beyond, you cannot give away your power as Board members to the association or to the employee groups or to the administration, for that matter, through the employee agreement. So an example that comes from case law is that you couldn't agree to binding mandatory arbitration in order to define an issue such as employee salaries. That remains the providence of the Governing Board. But the employee agreement would allow for that to be specifically authorized by the Board, and it then becomes similar to a regulation or a policy almost, so that you have to be able to follow those in order to observe the process.
Okay.
An employee handbook could be changed at will by the district administration, and that's one basic difference. The employee handbook that you currently have in existence, as my understanding, has not been adopted by the Governing Board.
Correct. Last question. What would the Board's role be in the employment agreement, in approval or in it being drafted?
The policy contemplates that the groups will present employee agreements to the Board for its consideration. It's entirely within the Board's discretion as to whether to adopt those agreements or not adopt them.
Thank you.
Vice President Sanowski?
I appreciate the work that has gone into this. I'd like to make a comment, if I may, that this policy proposal means we respectfully work together as partners to help our students reach their optimal potential. It bears repeating from the eloquent public comments this evening, and I really appreciated those, that when we work together, we have better outcomes. This work would, through a collaborative process, would define the form and function of our district. It means we put students first on a regular basis. Unfortunately, I do believe there have been many inaccurate messages and misconceptions put into the public, specifically lately, about unions, associations, as we call them here in Arizona. It is my opinion that unions are the workforce, the union members are not thugs, they are family members, they are our neighbors, they're in our schools, they represent our students at the table. They are our favorite teachers, our nurses, our office personnel, there are counselors, coaches, they're our favorite principals. They keep our buildings together, they safely transport our children to school and back home again, they help them cross the street safely, and care for our students while on our campuses. How the education world has been villainized is truly beyond my understanding. Educators advocate for our children, they advocate for our future. Our unions, our associations are vital to ensure we support and retain the best professional practices, the best professionals, and the best procedures. They are vital to student success. That's it for now.
Are there any further questions or comments? Well, I would like to thank the Policy Committee and all of our staff members, whether they are association members or not. Again, they're the lifeblood of this district, and we couldn't educate our students, we couldn't transport our students, we couldn't feed our students, we couldn't teach them, we couldn't, just couldn't do anything without our entire workforce. And this Board relies on the information and the work that you do to educate us about the decisions we will be ultimately making. I think before this, I think since as early as the 1960s, the Governing Board has worked with its associations without issue. It's been a collaborative process, it's been a mutual process, it's one that's delivered excellent outcomes for students. But we didn't have a policy in place. It was essentially informally done, and the hope here was to create a formal system. Usually, these Policy HAs do have an accompanying regulation. Boards do not approve regulations, our Board does not approve regulations, and it was felt that, frankly, rather than drafting a regulation to be implemented right away, that Dr. Menzel felt that it would be appropriate, I don't want to speak for Dr. Menzel, but he felt it would be more appropriate and more collaborative to work with the associations and all of our staff members to develop a thorough process that was fair and mutually agreed upon, and then they can move from there. As for, again, the policy not being online, I think we want to make sure we do that moving forward. Transparency is key. I know Board members in the past have asked for this to be done, or not current Board members, but previous candidates have asked for this to be done, and, you know, I think it's an important step. But ultimately, I don't know how much more I could say. I think I've requested a meeting on this 15 times, 20 times. It's been a lot, I forget. But I just appreciate everyone's time and help on this. It has been requested that we conduct a roll call vote on this, which means I would begin with Board Member Lindsey and work up towards me. Each Board member may make additional comments as desired. The Chair moves to approve Action Item 10I, Approval of Adoption of Policy HA, Employment Agreements. Is there a second?
Second.
Vice President Sanowski seconds. It is moved and seconded that the Board approve Action Item 10I, Approval of Adoption of Policy HA, Employment Agreements. Is there any further debate? Dr. Menzel?
I would just add and echo some of the comments that we heard tonight. In order for Scottsdale Unified School District to be the very best that we can be, meeting the needs of all of our students, we must work together. This meet-and-confer policy provides a framework for engaging in those intentional deliberate conversations, but we are not on different sides of the table, we're on the same team working towards a common goal. And so I'm looking forward to the formalized process and taking the next steps in partnership with the SEA, SSPA, and SAA.
Thank you. We will now begin with a roll call vote, starting with Board Member Zach Lindsey.
So I've been saving my talking chips before I place my vote. So first and foremost, I want to say that I'm incredibly grateful for all our staff, for all that our staff does for our students and families each and every day. I have so many examples of how our staff goes above and beyond for our students and families, and I'd just like to spend a moment sharing a few of them. Our classified staff contributes so much to our district, and their roles are so important. For example, Ms. Amaya Pima met my daughter at the gate every morning in kindergarten, held her hand, and walked her to the playground because she was too scared to walk alone. She did this for the entire school year. Ms. Tooker at Cochise recently responded to an email from me and immediately knew who my daughter was and what books she liked to read from the library. Keep in mind that Cochise is over 600 students. To our teachers, a huge thank you. Each year, I take a video of my daughter on the first day of school and then the last day of school. It's truly something to see how my daughter has grown as a person, and her teachers have all played such a pivotal role. It's also amazing to see how my daughter starts the year nervous and somewhat scared, but ends the year with such a strong bond with her teachers. I dread that last day of school, because I know she's going to be bawling when she gets in the car. To the numerous principals and APs who dedicate so much of themselves and sacrifice time away from their own families to give to their schools and the district before, during, and after-school hours, thank you. It is well-known about Mr. Noonan greeting students every morning to ensure they're starting their days off on the right foot and feeling welcomed. It's also amazing to see the culture Mrs. Miller and Dr. Aikman have established at Cochise. There is this trust between them and the staff that allows the staff to do what they do best and educate their students using their knowledge and expertise. With this vote, we are restoring some of the trust that was lost years ago between our staff, the district, and the Governing Board. This is about ensuring collaboration between the district and staff and giving them a seat at the table. What good is a district if our staff, who have such a lasting impact on our children, don't have a seat at the table to collaborate? To our staff, I want to say thank you for all you do and that your voice matters. With that, I'm a yes.
Board Member Lindsey votes aye. Board Member Hartwells?
Aye.
Board Member Hartwells votes aye. Board Member Beckman?
Okay. Well, I'll be short but sweet. I have always believed that a respected and valued educator and employee translates to a successful student. I am enthusiastic about a bright and collaborative future, moving SUSD forward together. Thank you to all that will truly make SUSD be the best that it can be.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Board Member, Board Member Beckman votes aye. Vice President Sanowski?
I am proud to stand behind the efforts to discuss needs, collaborate, and advocate for better work environment, because that work environment is the learning environment for our students. With that, I vote resoundingly yes.
Board Member, Vice President Sanowski votes yes. Board Member Greenberg, calling on myself, yea. I echo all the sentiment shared tonight, and I really appreciate Board Member Lindsey's sentimental approach and the relationship between our SEA members and all of our association members to his own daughter. I think that that was a very touching tribute. I will just add that part of our job, again, is governance, oversight, compliance. We have a significant number of policies that refer us back to the handbooks. The handbooks are all out of date. This is a problem, and we need to fix that from a compliance standpoint, we need to fix that from a safety standpoint for our students, and again, at the core of it all, providing a world-class, high-quality education to all. So I vote aye. The motion passes 5-0. The Board will now move to Action Item 10J, Approval of Revisions to Policy JICK, Student Violence, Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying. Dr. Menzel?
President Greenberg, Vice President Sanowski, members of the Governing Board. The Policy Committee presents to you for a second read, Proposed Revisions to Governing Board Policy JICK. Policy was entitled Student Violence, Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying. It would be retitled under this policy revision. The proposed revisions would comply with ASBA's Policy Advisory Number 639 and the requirements of ARS 15341, which require the Governing Board to have a policy that addresses harassment and bullying within its policy handbook. Proposed changes would require age-appropriate conflict resolution programs, building administration to document all investigations, and align language of protected categories to Governing Board Policy AC. This is presented for a second read and for your consideration and adoption. I am available to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions or comments about Policy JICK? Vice President Sanowski?
I would like to recognize my appreciation to the Policy Committee for this work. I greatly value the inclusion of the protected classes, including sexual orientation and transgender identity in this policy. That's it.
Are there any further questions or comments? Ms. McLennan, in relation to recommended changes to our policy or to our internal processes, are there going to be, or do you anticipate, any further changes to Policy JICK in the near future?
I do not anticipate that there would be any need to revise Governing Board Policy JICK, given any recommendations that have been received in recent weeks.
One thing I will comment on in general with discipline, and I think, you know, it applies here, but I think it applies more generally, is I would be interested in having the administration do a thorough review of discipline procedures in relation to any events of bullying. You know, we provide a very broad range here, but the appropriate... You know, we provide a very broad range here, but the appropriate sanctions and perhaps restorative justice practices are always important. Are there any, are there any further questions or comments about Policy JICK? The Chair moves to approve Action Item 10, which one are we on? 10J, apologies. 10J, Approval of Revisions to Policy JICK, Student Violence, Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying. Is there a second?
Second.
Board Member Hartwells seconds. It is moved and seconded that the Board approve Action Item 10J, Approval of Revisions to Policy JICK, Student Violence, Harassment, Intimidation, Bullying. Is there any further debate? Dr. Menzel? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries five zero. The Board will now move to Agenda Item 11, Future Items. 11A, Board Members May Propose Topics for Future Consideration. Are there any future topics for consideration? Vice President Sanowski.
Yes, I would like for us to have a serious discussion about placing caps on class sizes and not based on averages. I know that's an expensive process, but I think it's definitely worth our investment. I also would like for us to have a more thorough discussion about how the ESAR funds will be used, how things will look differently for our students' learning experience. And I'd like for us to actually, I know we've talked about the idea of the summer school or, as I call it, our summer success academies. I would like for us to, as a way of providing a good learning experience for our students, think of some more creative ways, other than the required subject material, to offer for learning opportunities for our students throughout our district, pre-K through 12.
Board Member Hartwells.
Thank you. So I would just actually kind of dovetail on what Vice President Sanowski had commented, but given the ESAR funding, two and three waves of funding that is imminent, I would appreciate an update on the creative ideas that have been hopefully solicited from our teachers and on how to deploy those resources in accordance with the stated goals of the law. And I would like to renew my request for a comprehensive outcomes data on academic performance and the events that also impact academic performance, such as discipline and attendance, which has been commented on this evening. Thank you. And may I also, I would just like to comment, I did not get a chance to say this, Mr. Bragg got his award, but I wept through his acceptance speech last week, and while I did that, I kept thinking of some words that Mother Teresa had left us with, and those were "do small things with great love." And in my mind, Mr. Bragg clearly kind of brings those guiding words to life, and I hope he knows how much his community loves him. He's just a great person. So thank you for letting me share that.
Thank you. Are there any further Board Member requests for future agenda items? Thank you. The Board will now move to Agenda Item 12, Dates of Upcoming Meetings. 12A, Next Meeting, Tuesday, May 4, 2021, at 6:00 p.m., Special Governing Board Meeting at the MDA. And Tuesday, May 18, 2021, at 6:00 p.m., Regular Governing Board Meeting, Coronado High School. And, Dr. Menzel, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there's an anticipated executive session for one of those meetings?
Yes, on May 4, we anticipate an executive session.
Okay. So just to be aware of that, and we will get scheduling done next week. The Board will now move to Agenda Item 13, Governing Board Reports. Do we have any Governing Board reports? Board Member Beckman.
Yeah, I know it's been a long night, but quickly, I want to take a moment to thank everyone that supported Project Prom. We were proud to help many of our students overcome the financial barriers, attending one of high school's most beloved milestones. Thanks to all of our wonderful community members, as well as my fellow Board members that volunteered. Thank you to the SEA, the Scottsdale Parent Council, Nutrition Services, Rose Smith for gathering an amazing amount of donations for prom tickets, and finally, to our students in the culinary program at Shopperell for the delicious cookies. It was a great night, and we can't wait for next year.
Thank you. Vice President Sanowski.
I would like to reiterate my appreciation to the SEA for initiating Project Prom well over a year ago, and to Governing Board Member Beckman for her work to see this through to fruition during a terribly taxing year, not just for our teachers, but also for our students. I know you and your family did a tremendous amount of work wrapping that up.
Board Member Hartwells.
Thank you. Yeah, it's also been a long night, so I appreciate, I'll go quickly here, but I wanted to just acknowledge two events that I had participated in with. Laguna Elementary had a STEAM night that was held in collaboration with Maricopa County Department of Air Quality, which actually might be a future collaborator with us. And Tonalea K-8 had a mad scientist night, and I also popped in and saw some, always fun, mixed baking soda with vinegar and see it explode, right? And then I participated in a number of ASBA webinars on anything from diversity and ESAR funding and finance, and will continue to do that and appreciate the opportunity to participate in those training webinars. And also had the pleasure of participating, like most of us, in the town halls, the community town halls, and just to thank the community, if you're still with us, for participating in those, and particularly interested in hearing the good news and highlights. It's always good to hear good news, and keen on the parents who identified a number of opportunities for inter-building collaborations to leverage the assets of the technology investments that were made this year, which I thought, I hope that we will be running with those ideas. I thought that was great. So thank you for all of you that participated in those, and the teen town halls also participated or had the opportunity to listen in on those. Very heartfelt. I think it took a lot of courage for the students to say what they had to say, and I just want to encourage them to keep speaking their truth to power. I thought it was outstanding.
Are there any few additional Board Member reports? I would just like to acknowledge again, all, I believe all Board members have attended at least one of the superintendent town halls, which have been very successful, and it's been a pleasure hearing back from students in some cases, but parents and staff and administrators in all the cases. So thank you for that. The Board will now move to Agenda Item 14, Adjournment. Yay. The Chair moves to adjourn this regular meeting of the Scottsdale Unified Number 48 Governing Board on April 20, 2021, at 9:30 p.m. Is there a second?
Second.
Board Member Hartwells seconds. It is moved and seconded. On this, it says 9:30. I have my own time. It is moved and seconded that the Governing Board adjourn this regular meeting of the Scottsdale Unified Number 48 Governing Board on April 20, 2021, at 9:04 p.m. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is adjourned.